We are ready to roll.
Very good. I called the City of Wilsonville Planning Commission meeting of Wednesday, November 10, 2021 to order. Ms. Pinyard, please do the roll call.
Happy to. Chair Cameron Mesba.
Here.
Olive Gallagher.
Here.
Cherry Greenfield.
Here.
Brianna Finsky.
Here.
Jennifer Willard.
Here.
Rob Huberlin.
Here.
Aaron Woods.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I will now stand for its staff to lead us in the recitation of the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance
To the of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. This is our time for to to have any citizen input that we might have. This is the time that citizens have the opportunity to address the planning commission regarding any item that is not already scheduled for a formal public hearing tonight. And the only public hearing that we have tonight is for the urban forest plan. Therefore, if any member of the audience either here in City Hall or via Zoom would like to speak about any work session item or any other matter of concern, please raise your hand or send a message to the recorder using the Zoom chat function so that we may hear from you now. Do we have anybody, any take?
Chair Mesba, we do not have any members of the public at City Hall to testify. I am going to ask one member of the public on Zoom real quick by chat whether they would like to say anything or not.
Okay.
Okay, that person has not responded or raised their hand via Zoom, so I'm going to assume they do not wish to speak.
Okay.
Oh, wait, 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 wait. They have raised their hand, so we do have a member of the public here to say something.
Excellent, and you're going to have have them give you the information that normally is on a testimony card, right?
Yes, I can follow up with this person, have them submit a card for us. Yes.
Very, thank you.
Ms. Anderson, if you would like to speak, go ahead.
I'm just here to listen. I didn't mean to talk.
Okay. Apologize about that and enjoy our agenda this evening.
Thank you.
We try to encourage everybody to to talk who is attending, even if you just move, we assume you want to talk, so input is always welcome. We appreciate your attending our commission meeting tonight. The next item is consideration of October 13, 2021, planning commission minutes. Anybody has any changes, additions, corrections, clarifications that they want to do to the minutes that were submitted? I see shaking heads. It is good as submitted. Thank you, Ms. Pinyard, for a flawless minute. Next item is our public hearing tonight, Urban Forest Management Plan. And I will start by reading our legislative hearing procedure for the record. Members before the planning commission, matters before the planning commission involve legislative public hearings. These are somewhat different than the quasi judicial hearings conducted by the city's development review board. The planning commission would like to hear from anyone with testimony to offer that is relevant to the issues before the planning commission. If you wish to testify tonight, you need to complete a testimony card. For those who are here in person, please complete a testimony card located at the side of the room and hand it to the recorder. For members of the public participating remotely with the Zoom meeting platform, digital comment cards are already filed with recorder, but we ask that you please indicate now or after the presentation a desire to testify by sending a message to the recorder at City Hall using the Zoom chat function. For those people joining the meeting by phone only, you will be unmuted after the staff presentation and ask one at a time if you wish to testify. Please note that testimony may also be submitted by email during the hearing by emailing the following email address, and the address is planning@ci.wilsonville.or.us. Then please confirm with the recorder through the Zoom chat option that you emailed your comments. Your email will then be read into the record. Remain in the meeting until the comments are received and read aloud. Written comment or testimony received after the public hearing has closed cannot be considered. Because your testimony gives you legal standing in the matter for which you are testifying, it is important that you provide your full name and address at the beginning of your comment, or if you prefer not to state your address aloud in the public forum, state that your address is as provided on the testimony card you submitted and make your statement. When your name is called to testify, if you're present in council chambers, please come forward to the podium and speak clearly into the microphone for the record. If you're participating in the meeting remotely using the Zoom phone or web platform, please wait to be unmuted by the recorder before stating your name and comments for the record. When you testify, please address your comments to the criteria that will be reviewed by the city staff at the start of the hearing. Some of the issues that come before the planning commission are fairly complicated. For that reason, we especially appreciate any specific recommendations or suggestions that you may have. We will ask you to avoid redundant testimony. If you agree with testimony that has already been given, just tell us that. If you have a large number of people, if we have a large number of people interested in testifying, we may limit the time allotted to each member of the public to three minutes. At the end of your testimony, members of the commission may have questions for you. Thank you for taking the time to participate in the hearing tonight and help us to deal with these issues. We are we are, the hearing is on planning commission resolution number LP 21-0004, the Wilsonville Planning Commission Resolution recommending approval of the Urban Forest Management Plan to the City Council. With that, I will have ask ask the staff to start the presentation before we open it to public.
Thank you, Chair Mesba.
Bate Shell, do you want to introduce introduce the staff that is going to make presentations?
Yes, I would. Thank you very much. Chair Mesba, members of the planning commission, my name is Miranda Bate Shell, Planning Director for the city, and it is my privilege this evening to introduce Kerry Rappold, the Natural Resources Program Manager, and the project that he's going to present tonight for public hearing. As a tree city, the city of Wilsonville takes a lot of pride in the urban forest and the canopy that that provides and all the benefits that that provides to the city, and this is a really important milestone. It's especially critical as we face the climate challenges that we're facing now. The Urban Forest Management Plan will guide the city through goals and strategies for maintaining, protecting, and enhancing the tree canopy, which after the eight months of work we have done post the ice storm in February is really important work. As we endeavor in that recovery, this plan will really help to set the stage and help guide the city and push us to work harder and smarter in restoring that urban canopy. And so I don't want to steal too much thunder from Mr. Rappold, but it's a very exciting plan that we're adopting, and it is my honor to introduce him this evening to walk you through what we are proposing for adoption at the council.
Well, thank you, Miranda. That was a great introduction. So yeah, for the record, Kerry Rappold, Natural Resources Program Manager. And yeah, I'm here tonight to present to you the Urban Forest Management Plan. We've been working on this for about a year and a half, and as I mentioned during your work session in October, we actually took a little bit of extra time to try to finalize the plan because of the winter storm event that occurred in February and the updated street tree inventory that came with that. And then, as I'll mention in my presentation tonight, it also gave us an opportunity to incorporate a tree equity score, which gives us a canopy goal to try to achieve over the next 25 years. So so as Miranda mentioned, this plan is was developed to maintain, protect, enhance the existing urban forest. And just let me get my, there we go. I guess I'm on video now. And so it's it's basically developed in a way where it led to the develop or to the identification of long-term goals, actions, and priorities in order to achieve that vision for the the urban forest in Wilsonville. And so I'll be walking through some of those plan elements tonight that went into developing, you know, what you see here as far as the plan itself and the process that we followed in order to achieve that. So with your staff report tonight, there are three exhibits. The first exhibit is the is the Urban Forest Management Plan. The second exhibit is basically a summary of the feedback that we received from the planning commission primarily at that October 13 meeting, and then how we've addressed that in the plan. So we gave the specific sections and pages where those revisions were made to address the comments that you gave us at that meeting. And then this this project has, you know, basically complied with all, it has complied with all the notification requirements in terms of being posted, the public materials posted a week before the meeting. In addition to that, we did a postcard mailing to every resident or every address within Wilsonville. And so we wanted to have the broadest outreach that we could to make the public aware of where we've ended up with the plan. So with that, oh, one other element, excuse me. So in in the materials that you received, we had two additions in terms of public comment, one being an email that was was received and then also a letter. And so those have been added to the public record, and, you know, we can certainly discuss any of those comments that we have received. So let me walk through a little presentation about the plan itself. And let's see here. I can't seem to get this to it advance. Do you know why, Miranda?
Have you done a share screen?
I may not have done, yeah. Let's see here. It won't let me escape out of this mode. Okay. Oh, I see. Yeah, never, yeah, yeah. Sorry for the delay here. Just a sec. There we go. All right. Hopefully, everybody can see that. And so, yeah, once again, this is the public hearing for the Urban Forest Management Plan, LP 21-0004. There we go. So as part of what I'm going to cover tonight, there'll just be a brief project overview, some of the plan highlights, certainly what came about in terms of those goals and actions that were developed as part of doing the work that we did over the last year and a half. And then, as I mentioned, I'll summarize the feedback that we received from the PC and also how that was incorporated into the plan. And then there's time left over for discussion. So just a brief overview of the schedule. We kicked the project off last May, and one of the most important elements that we did early on was a tree inventory that we took a look at trees along French Prairie Road in Charbonneau as well as trees within town center. And so that was actually incorporated into the street or the overall street tree inventory that the city has. There was a lot of research that went into this. I'll talk a little bit more about that. We also had public meetings. We also had public meetings, virtual public meetings, as well as surveys that were done last fall. And then we undertook the drafting of the plan, and as I mentioned, then we had that extra time that we wanted to devote to it just because of the winter storm event and being able to incorporate this tree equity score. And then, starting in September, we, we did a work session with Planning Commission, and then another work session in October. And then, since then, I've had a work session with the City Council, and that went very well. They provided one comment that we will be incorporating into the plan. And now we're here, here, I'm here before you tonight as far as the plan adoption, and then ultimately on December 6th, taking it to the City Council for plan adoption. So the plan is based on six planning elements, and those planning elements include an extensive research that was done, city staff meetings, data analyses, benchmarking, auditing, and then, as I mentioned, community engagement. And so ultimately, when that was summarized into a document, it gave us the, the means to go about drafting these, these five goals that are critically important to the plan and to its implementation. And so I'll speak a little bit more of the, about those, but there are actions, actions that are associated with those goals. So just in terms of highlights, as far as what's in the plan, as I mentioned, we did this, this inventory for the town center, Charbonneau area. There were a number of other analyses that we did in terms of ecosystem services. There were the two focus areas, Town Center and Charbonneau, that we looked at, a variety of things in regards to those areas. And then the auditing that we did, consistent with sort of a national approach to doing that, some, a system that the U.S. Forest Service developed. And then we moved into the actual management part of the plan and took that information that we received through the analyses and spoke to staff about their perspectives as far as tree management and what we're doing with the urban forest. And we developed a number of things that were associated with that, whether they be tree lists, storm prep and response, and then these prioritization of tree planting as far as how we might achieve the goal that's in the plan. And then we took this information out to the public in regards to two virtual open houses, and then surveys that were done in conjunction with those open houses. And then one of the more interesting pieces was having this photo contest. Basically, we asked for people to submit photos of trees, individual trees, forested areas, and we had, I believe, about 90 submittals in regards to that, individual photos. And the prize winners of the contest are in the plan as far as their photos and some of the other ones that were submitted. So the plan has a 25-year horizon, so what you'll see in terms of the goals and the targets, they're all based on that in terms of identifying the, the target years where those will be implemented. And as I've said, there are these five goals that were developed as part of it. And then ultimately, we'll be looking at ways to, how do we go about implementing the plan over that 25-year period, and then actually evaluating, monitoring what we're doing in terms of that implementation. So one of the most important aspects of the plan is, is this goal that we were able to develop from the tree equity score. So this is a, a software that was developed by American Forest, and it only really became available in June of this year. And so what it lets, lets us do is to take these census block groups that cover most of the city in terms of the way it's represented here with the map, and we're starting with a, a percentage of tree canopy that's 30% in the community, and ultimately, we'd like to get this to 36%. So it's a 6% increase. It would mean an additional 20,000, 27,000 trees. And each one of these census blocks also gets what's called a tree equity score. And so the, the basis for really achieving this goal long-term is to get every one of those census block groups up to a score of 75. And you can see with this legend here where some of those areas, you know, currently rate in terms of that tree equity score. So there are five categories: tree management policy, cap, capacity, training, and authority, assessments and plans, community engagement, and green asset management. And then with each one of these comes a variety of actions, and then the targets in terms of how do we achieve those actions. So regarding tree management policy, there's the canopy goals that I, I mentioned specifically with the tree equity score and how those would fit with these two focus areas, but also more broadly in terms of the community. Storm and disaster preparation. Ultimately, we'll probably do a more refined assessment of this canopy goal, and ultimately, we want to have some type of information that we share as far as a tree manual to help guide the proper management of the urban forest. One of the key pieces, excuse me, going forward will be the establishment of an urban forestry working group. This will be a staff-led group, and it'll give us the opportunity on a routine basis, probably quarterly meetings, to talk about, you know, what's been identified in the plan, how we go about implementing that. And it'll basically follow a similar format that we have to right now in terms of the winter storm response team that was developed after the February storm. And there's also, you know, the importance of maintaining the certifications that we have for the arborist on staff and adhering to and applying best management practices. As far as assessments and plans, you know, we're going to keep refining some of the information that's in the plan in terms of tree planting and the recommendations that you see in some of the appendices. Ultimately, we'd want to have better guidance too in terms of trees and construction sites, but also in regards to existing infrastructure. And then keep looking at, you know, these benefits and updating that in regards to what is the current status of, you know, what is, what we're seeing here within the community. And one of the certainly more important pieces too is community engagement. I think one of the things that was pretty obvious from the winter storm was that, you know, there's probably a number of people in our community that may not be as aware as they need to be in terms of what it means to own and take care of a tree. One of the things we saw was, you know, there were trees that clearly were removed as part of the winter storm, but there were also trees that were removed prior to the winter storm. And, you know, we want to just make the community as aware as possible of their roles and responsibilities, and how we can, you know, work to, work together really in terms of managing our urban forest. And so this is reflected in some of these actions as far as how we would reach out to the community, what we would provide, and, you know, really develop a partnership in terms of how we go forward with the urban forest. And then last is this idea of green asset management. So it's looking at how do we prioritize and look at risk associated with trees. Certainly diseases and, and insects and other things are a challenge when you look at, you know, the trees within our community and, and the variety of things that, you know, might come into play. And then ensuring that what we're doing is, is basically going to meet that canopy goal that we have for the 36 and 46, so the 36% by 2046. So just briefly, this is a summary, and like I said, this is Exhibit B in your, in your packet. And so we describe here the input that we received from you at that October 13th meeting. And so it covered, you know, the tree canopy and tree equity. There was focus areas that you had mentioned, some comments, and then the community outreach and education. And so all of those have been identified in terms of the actual revisions we made to the plan. And that will cover the process and the plan that you see here tonight. So I'm here to take any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much. Commissioner, any questions from Mr. Rappold? I'm not seeing you, so, oh, there we go. Now, Commissioner Woods?
Yeah, I had a question, and this is, this also goes to a letter that we received from a citizen concerning the cost of the plan. Can you share anything on that?
So yeah, we're going to have to certainly have a discussion with the City Council and, you know, look at that as part of the budgeting process. But our, our hope would be that we would have some funds that might be available on a yearly basis to try to implement some of these actions that are in the plan, but that will have to go through, you know, the typical budgeting process to determine what that might be for any given fiscal year.
Okay. But that is something that is forthcoming, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? I have a question. Oh, go ahead, Kerry, go ahead. You're muted.
Of course. Thank you. There was a mention at our last meeting about the possibility of some sort of a manual that is produced for, uh, community use that would address, uh, responsibilities and resources regarding our trees with respect to, to, uh, community and citizens. Has anything, has any further thought about that?
Well, it is an action within the plan, so it has been identified as it's a priority. And so I think it'll be an important discussion when we start working together as that Urban Forestry Working Group. I personally feel like it's, it's one of the more important things we could do early on, just because of, just because of what we saw in terms of, you know, the winter storm, our updated street tree inventory. I think it's really important information that, you know, would be beneficial not only to the community, but also to staff in terms of how we go about actively managing the urban forest.
Related to that is my concern about articulating the relative responsibilities of HOAs and the city.
Yeah, and I think we could lay that out a little bit more clearly with a manual like that, and, you know, establish expectations as far as what it means if you're an HOA, if you're an individual property owner. But also, like I said, you know, what these expectations are for how we as, you know, city employees manage our urban forest too.
Good. You're muted.
To follow up on that, Kerry, I think it was brought up at our last meeting, the idea of some form of education for the community. Um, you know, it's sort of like when a tree is cut down before permission is given, someone can feign ignorance of going, oh, I didn't know. And I'm wondering if there would be some value in offering some educational courses at City Hall or in some capacity to not only landscape companies and HOA people, but the community in, in large in terms of the responsibility we all have and the way you go about discussing either tree removal or tree maintenance. Cause I just think people just, they're just not aware. They don't know. And then it's too late because once the tree is dead or gone or diseased, it's like, well, what can we do? So maybe there's some, some aspect of that that would be of use to the community.
I would agree, yeah. I don't know what format that'll take at this point, but I, I would agree, like even the most basic information regards to this, I think could be very helpful.
I mean, just the conversation that you and I just had over here, which was so kind of you to take the time to do it, was immediately addressed, and crisis averted, so.
No, I, I agree. I, I think sometimes it, it, like I said, I think just even the, whatever way, whatever, you know, possible media type of, you know, that we use to get that message out there, I think would be helpful. And so I think the manual, we could, we could use the opportunity to kind of even promote a manual like that through some, some training or something that we provide online.
And I would be more than happy to provide my services either in training or in the marketing message to, to, to that effort, because I think it's really important.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Any other questions? I was looking through the plan to see if we had a coherent approach to the capture of the biomass. We talked about taking down trees that are diseased and storm damaged and so forth. All of that, um, uh, carbon capture is potentially, uh, going to get released back into the atmosphere if it becomes firewood. And on your, on Appendix A on page 42, I noticed a kind of, an example of passing kind of comment on exploring the cost effectiveness and safe use of utilizing urban forest biomass on city properties. Can you talk a little bit more about what your thoughts are on how that's going to be approached?
Well, I think it's probably something we need to explore a little bit more, but I know that, I, I don't know if you've been to the, the new nature play area that the Parks and Recreation Department developed in Memorial Park, but what they were able to do with that project was to basically utilize a number of trees that were damaged or, you know, or, or that had to be removed as part of the response to the winter storm. And they were incorporated into that, that actual play area. And I know we've done other types of things with some of these trees too that have had to be removed, where they've been incorporated into a pollinator garden that was established near the Stein-Bouger Barn. And to the extent possible, they try to reutilize trees that have come down or had to be removed within other, you know, activities that they, they do as far as like mulching an area. But primarily, if you're looking at a natural area, we would just want to leave that woody debris in place. And we'd leave it in place through snags or, you know, coarse woody debris that remains on the, you know, the ground of that forested area. So I don't know if that addresses your, your question?
It does to a limited extent. I mean, that is, uh, well, I should, I should probably, in full disclosure, say that this is a tiny part of impact on carbon release. We are having flash and burn agriculture throughout the world. Amazon is being burned down. So I mean, if, if our street trees end up being firewood, it's not going to save or, or sink to the world. But to me, this is what we can actually control. It's in our hands. And I was looking for much more, a, a, a more kind of, a broader kind of a program. For example, even those trees that come down on private property, if it was cost effective or, and cost effectiveness would have to be taking into account, uh, uh, carbon capture part of the, uh, benefits. But if it was practicable and cost effective to have chipped wood from all of, no matter who cuts what tree down, it either becomes lumber that can be used for landscaping or whatever, or becomes chipped, wood chip that people can then go and use to mulch their gardens if they need, or landscapers can use, that kind of thing. So it's recycled back instead of ending up becoming firewood. Anything that keeps that basically from becoming firewood would be a good thing, but the, the kind of examples you brought up are, are great, and they're innovative, and they're good that the Parks Department is doing that, but that really doesn't even dent the big pile of, of woody debris that gets hauled from prunings and diseased trees and so forth every year, much less the store. So that's a little bit... So that's a little bit bigger kind of a strategy is what I was hoping that we would be looking at at least. I don't know if it's practical. I understand that this could be beyond kind of immediate tackling by the city because of all these technical issues that it involves. But I was wondering whether or not that kind of an expansive view of maintaining that carbon sequestration is being considered.
I mean, I think, you know, with, with anything, we would probably have some consideration of it, but it's probably, it's certainly at this point beyond the capacity of the city to do something like that. I think as you saw, I don't know if you had the chance to go out to the commuter rail site when that was used as basically the, the point where they brought all of the winter storm, you know, biomass that, the trees that had to be removed. And it took up a sizable area. So, I mean, space would be one consideration, how we would coordinate something like this. I mean, we really don't have any staff that are devoted to doing something like this. So I think where we can and where it's feasible and practical, we would do it. But I think, you know, to have a citywide approach to it would probably be problematic at this point.
I understand that in most places that they do this effectively, they do it at a regional or countywide kind of basis where they have composting sites that also recycles wood and the trunks are kept for artists who want to turn them into turned wood, art pieces or whatever, or they want to cut them and make benches out of them. And then the rest of it ends up being composted as part of chips and/or, and made available for gardens. I understand that is a composting operation that's probably a large scale kind of countywide thing. I didn't know if any of the counties in the metro area had any program like that that could end up being potentially a place that where the city could, could contract with or cooperate with.
Not that I'm aware of. I mean, it may exist, but I think sort of the comprehensive way that you're looking at it, I'm not aware of that type of approach to it where it could be used for a variety of different things.
Okay. We will wait for that to be the third or fourth iteration of the update of the Urban Forest Management.
Sure. I think it's, I think it's a great goal. I, I just think it's, it would be a challenge at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other points or questions, Commissioner? I don't see any. Any other staff remarks or presentations? Did we go to, should I call for public testimony? I guess it's time. All members of the public on the call will be unmuted and asked if they wish to testify. If you do wish to testify, please respond when asked and when you're unmuted. And if you're emailing comments, please remember to state that for the record and so that the staff will read your comments into the record. Also a reminder that if you're making comments, you need to fill a testimony card, either physically or via email.
Chair Masbah, we do not have any members of the public on Zoom or in City Hall that wish to testify on this item. And I have checked the planning email and the planning email address also has not received an email with testimony.
Yes. The commission did receive two earlier emails. Those are going to be read into the record or maybe they already are?
Those essentially have been integrated into the record. Staff will include that in attachment. I believe it's C.
Very good.
And that will be forwarded to the City Council.
Excellent. Thank you. So at this point, I declare the public hearing closed. It is 6:42 and we started it at 6:10. So, Commissioner, do you want to have a discussion before you make a motion on the resolution? What is your, what is your desire? I see ambivalence. Nobody's jumping at it. Why, why don't somebody?
Chair Masbah, I'll move to approve resolution LP 21-0004 as written.
It has been moved by Commissioner Heverline and seconded is a tie. Which one of you, arm wrestle, Gallagher and Greenfield arm wrestle? Who had their hand up first? I, I, okay, Gallagher did. Seconded by Commissioner Gallagher. Discussion. I think this, you know, just, just from my, from my point of view, this is a really well-done plan. It's comprehensive and it is starting a process that I think is going to hopefully involve the community and, and create this ownership that really should be part of our green infrastructure. I'm really hopeful that it's going to become that way.
The only comment that I would make is that I, I agree, the plan is very well-done and it's a, it's a very good addition to the, the, the planning documents. And one thing that I would, I would love to see in the future, when, after we have more experience with it, is I'd like to see it integrated more with the building code. So that way the developers have more instructions on how to plant. And so it's not in conflict with utilities or in conflict with buildings or, or foundations. I'd also like to see more direction there on what are the penalties for if a developer doesn't follow their plans for saving trees? That may actually be in the, in the, in the building codes, but, and I'm not aware of it. But I would like to see some of those protections.
Thank you.
Commissioner Greenfield, I'd like to make, make a point again about the need for periodic updates. I'd like to see regularly scheduled periodic updates to the management plan that would cast spotlight on other areas of the city until we feel that the whole city has had its fair share of attention. I don't know what the interval should be on these periods, but I, I'd like to see a regular rotation.
Yeah, we can certainly take that into account. Thank you.
Do you have, do you have any thoughts about what the rotation, updated rotation will be?
I don't.
I'm sorry. I thought, I didn't know you were speaking.
Go ahead, Kerry.
Well, I mean, typically, I mean, master plans, management plans of that nature, you're typically at a 10-year period of time where you're, you're updating and looking at them again. We could look at something maybe a little bit, you know, sooner than that. But I think the reality is we will be looking at other focus areas in the community as we become more aware of where there might be, you know, a number of issues associated with the neighborhood, or I think that'll come into play anyways. Especially, I think we're going to be more cognizant of how we work with our street tree inventory, other data that we collect within the community. Especially as we go through that process of refining the tree equity score and we do a tree assessment based on, you know, a closer look at these neighborhoods. So I think that'll come into play regardless of whether we do an official update to the plan or not.
So one of the, my periodic kinds of, of my wish list is to have the data. Let me back up. A lot of the, the plans that we have been doing recently seems to me have had goals and objectives and processes in order to move towards those goals. So these are not checklist kind of plans. They are process plans and plans that have transformation as part of their, their development and growth and things that we are hoping to see. And as part of these plans, we typically have included data gathering and indicators to see whether or not we're achieving the goals that we thought we were going to achieve. And I have, we're doing this with housing. We're doing this housing affordability. The same thing with equity in housing and now with urban forestry. I have been looking forward to the time when we have a critical mass of the data available so that we can have on the city's website infographics that shows where we are with all of these indicators and targets that we have been setting up for ourselves. And are we missing them or are we getting close? And are some strategies working better than others? And that should be what would get us to say, now, wait a minute, this is not panning out the way we thought it was going to. Maybe we should reexamine what we thought we were doing. And not wait 10 years because by then, you know.
Too late.
It may be too late. So I don't know whether or not our data guru in the city is thinking about having the city's website have this data page on, on different targets and different indicators. That, that would be, I would do a jig dance when I see that because that I think is going to be the kind of information for the citizenry and for the community. Like you do when you're driving a car, you need to know where you're going and how the car is operating. Otherwise, you're gonna end up in a ditch. I concur enthusiastically.
Ditto.
I appreciate that.
I don't know what we need to do to get that going.
Right. No, it's, I, I'm still trying to, to take it in, but yeah, I think it's, it's a good comment. I, I think, you know, wherever we can, we, we would like to have these, these benchmarks or these metrics to, to try to determine where we're at in a process. So I, I think we're doing, you know, certainly more of that. I don't know if it'll get quite to the point where it's as comprehensive as, as you might want to see it, but I think it's something we can, you know, certainly move towards.
Well, a lot of the graphics you already have in your plan. You know, you've set up your goals. You've set up the steps towards where you're gonna achieve the goal. You've even put a date on it. And so turning that into, you know, a curve that says, you know, this is where we are now and we're going to 2026, the completion of this and this is how far we've come, is just, just, I understand that's heavy data, but these days you seem to be gathering data on everything anyway. Anyway, just a comment, just a comment. I'm, I'm not trying to get commitment from you, Mr. Apples, Mr. Apples, on, on this big project. I know it's not your bailiff. Any other comments on this? Is the resolution fine the way it is? Are, you're not needing to modify it? Because otherwise I'm ready to call for a vote on it. Should we, should we have a roll call on the vote? Ms. Pinnier, could you please do a roll call? Otherwise I don't know how many As and Nays on hearings.
Absolutely. All of Gallagher? A. Barry Greenfield?
Yes.
Ron Heberline? Mayor Masbah?
Yes.
Brian Tocinski?
Yes.
Jennifer Willard?
Yes.
Aaron Woods?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, seven to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. The next subject. Now, you know, I missed my speech. I know I need to go back to Ms. Mitchell. Why don't you take it away?
Sounds good. Thank you, Chair Masbah and Commissioner.
We have, we have a work session coming up and I don't know whose turn.
It is on the I-5 Bike and Pedestrian Bridge and I am happy to introduce it.
Very good. Go ahead.
So as all of you know, this project is near and dear to my heart. The I-5 Bike Pedestrian Bridge and Plaza have been community priorities for a long time. They've been in the transportation system plan. They're a key project in our connectivity plan. And then during the town center planning effort, those projects, the bridge was highlighted as a framework project and then the idea of the plaza came to be. The plaza is intended to be a welcoming space, a community gathering place that welcomes people into the town center and into the city of Wilsonville. As you know, you've had several work sessions on this topic, so I won't say a whole lot except that a key element of the design is the ramp wall. That was something we received feedback on at the last work session with you and with the City Council. And it felt like, based on the feedback, is we were not quite there yet. And there were some questions and concerns about what had been presented. So the team has designed some alternatives for you that will be the focus of your discussion tonight. And we are excited to hear your thoughts on that. And so you know this team well. They barely need introduction. However, I get to introduce Mr. Zach Weigl, the city engineer, which is a slightly different introduction and title than the last time you saw him. So please take it away, Mr. Weigl.
Thank you, Miranda. As Miranda said, my name is Zach Weigl, Wilsonville City Engineer. And with me tonight is Kim Ribold, Senior Planner with Wilsonville. And then from the design team is Bob Goodrich with Dowell. He's leading the consultant team. And then, you know, Melissa Erickson with MIG, who is leading the plaza design. So, yeah, Miranda pretty much said it. Yeah, from the last meeting with Planning Commission and City Council, we wanted to take a step back and, and look at some alternatives for the ramp wall in the plaza and put together some more comprehensive cost estimates for those alternatives. So Melissa did a great job of coming up with these four alternatives and I'll, I'll go ahead and turn it over to her and she can walk through those.
Thank you very much, Zach and Miranda. Always, always a pleasure. So this will be quick, some eye candy, and then hopefully it will be discussion. But what we'd like to do is kind of show you a couple of different options as we've been looking at refinements based on your comments in those of City Council. So let's get this followed up. So we are talking about the plaza wall and so it's the main both backdrop and focal point within the plaza. The first option, which is the one everyone has seen, is the basalt columns and looking that as the overall facing. The image on the left is an image of, you know, kind of the inspiration of looking at those columns with the thought that it would be pure basalt columns, literally kind of fastened in front of the retaining wall to provide that rich texture. And we had a brief conversation before about its geologic accuracy to section law and limit. With an alternative, which we'll talk about a little bit later, which would invert it slightly from that image, which has the top-down emphasis, so it receives as you get closer to the actual structure. With an option for water, which we will talk about shortly, which would invert it a little bit so we could have a little bit more splash and sound attenuation perhaps at the bottom. The bottom image gives you some concept of what The bottom image gives you some concept of what that potentially might look like as you're looking across it, as far as, you know, slightly anesthetic CAD version, but gives you some proximity, and we can come back and look at this in a little bit as well. Oop, wrong button. The second option, and this is more specifically based on the comments we had about incorporating art more specifically and looking at that component and playing on the ripples and Eddie's kind of variation of flow, is looking at providing a texture along the wall itself. There are two different options. Option two shows it in a three-dimensional concrete facing, could be lit, provides some relief. We know there are maintenance concerns for climbing, we certainly would take a look at that. But the thought it potentially could look something like the bottom with the idea that being an iteration of water going around stones in the river and continuing that seeming across consistently is what we're looking at in the plaza. Oop, the iteration next to that is playing with that same ripples with stone, but doing it in perforated metal. This would be offset from the retaining wall, potentially could be backlit, so provides additional evening texture. This gives you some ideas of kind of how that could be as far as whether it's imagery or slightly more textured, what it potentially could look like as far as having it be backlit and components. There haven't been that many of those in the Bay Area and/or in the Northwest, but it's growing as far as an opportunity to really customize an opportunity. And we think that that provides a different alternative that gets us closer to the art aspect, as well as the consideration just for an alternative. And then the fourth option, which could apply to any of the three, the basalt columns, the concrete, three-dimensional component, or the perforated metal, is adding water. And this is something that's come up several different times as a consideration, primarily because of the sound from I-5 and trying to take a look at what we can do to try and help provide some white noise or at least some attenuation for the sound that carries through. These are some present images of different aspects, looking at from a full water wall, whether there's ground play. We know that play specifically is not desired nor splash pads, but looking at some activation of water along the wall could work, whether it is basalt, whether it is concrete, or whether it is perforated metal. So that is an option that could apply to all and/or any. However, there are obviously cost implications, and so we wanted to at least pull together some refinements based on what we have provided earlier. The original basalt columns, which is what we've been showing and what people have responded to most positively from all the visual surveys that we've provided, is roughly $600,000. The concrete version, which is kind of in that ripples of stone with water flow, is about $220,000, so, you know, certainly a third less, give or take. In perforated metal, with that same kind of rippling image, is slightly more, but certainly less, at about $260,000. And then the water feature would be the price of either option one, two, or three, plus essentially a million dollars. The water feature itself is pretty expensive, but we wanted to at least look at it based on some of the direction provided. So there are iterations. As we said, the basalt has been kind of the main piece, but we also know that there's been kind of some need for trying to take a look at something that was a little bit more of an attraction and something much more specific. So the etched concrete ripple version, and then whether it's in concrete or in perforated metal, were two alternatives that we felt maybe push it a little bit more on the art side while providing some additional activation with night lighting as a possibility. And so with that, we were hoping to get some thought and feedback from you all as far as preferences, direction, whether this maybe feels like it's hitting a better tone or tenor for us to figure out which ones to move forward with.
Yeah, and just to add on a little bit, we will, we are bringing this also to City Council on Monday next week, so we'll be sharing the feedback from Planning Commission with Council also.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
With the three or four applications, it's really three plus the water, is there any estimate of which one would weather the best in this climate, given the fact that we don't know what the climate will be? And that's.
Excellent clarifier. They are all roughly the same. I mean, basalt lasts for fairly significant, really has to do with its connections. The concrete facing, you see on freeway walls all over the place, it lasts a long time. And same with perforated metal. They've had them up in a variety of different climates, freeze thaw considerations, and it has lasted well. So we are not concerned about that. We view that as being a long-term investment in any case, regardless of the material choice. I will say the water feature always has concerns, just because that does require ongoing maintenance. The desire for it to look good, even when there isn't water running, is always a consideration. But we do know that water is always a additional variable.
Go ahead.
Can you go to your slide seven?
I sure can. Hold on. There we go.
Okay, maybe it's not your slide seven, the one with the plan.
Oh, sorry, yes. Sorry for the slight delay. There we go.
Yeah, that's the one. So this wall is the inside where, yes, there were hurters. Okay. Do we have an idea of the scale of that wall? How tall will it be? How wide?
Yeah. So the wall at the western end is about 10 feet tall, and then it tapers down, it's at ground level at this point, so it's probably about three feet, kind of at the edge of the plaza.
So it's not quite as big as some of the examples that you've been able to show?
Correct, but it is about 100, 120 feet long, so it does have a presence along that curve.
Okay. And on this drawing, there aren't any trees immediately or obstructions immediately in front of it, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
We are looking at revising the plaza based on the direction we get for that ramp wall, so we can take a look at that. We do have shade structures that'll be in there, we'll be modifying the specialty paving pattern so it's more responsive to whatever's happening on the wall, that those will likely change. But the plantings are essentially on the edge. We are looking at whether we will get something in there besides a shade structure, as we've been having those ongoing conversations for kind of all-weather options. And so there might be one, depending on what structurally is viable, given the foundation coordination that needs to occur. Okay.
Thank you. I have a question. Go ahead. Can you go back to the additions?
Which one would you like, sorry?
Uh, let's see, this one, this is the one that is on a decreasing height. Is that correct?
That is.
Okay, so on any of these, when I look at them, and go to the next one too, option two, is there any protection for the wall for kids, you know, deciding that they want to try to climb on or get in front?
We know that maintenance is concerned about climbing, and certainly we are too as safety. We also know people do all kinds of crazy things. That's partly why on the basalt wall, the one without water, we are looking at have it essentially topped down so that it's harder to climb. Basalt does have, you know, crevices between those columns, so if someone has really great finger strength and is a climber, they probably could. I don't know if there's any way we could stop them, but they certainly are not going to be encouraged. Also, they're falling on hard surface, so they are certainly taking a risk there.
Yeah.
I would say that basalt is probably the most climbable of the options. The concrete work would probably be limited in its release to a few inches, so you still could get that shade and tone between the base relief of the finishes. And the perforated metal would essentially be, you know, a flat piece of metal with holes, but not big enough for you to actually get enough finger grips in to climb. But it certainly would be a consideration, so we'll look forward to, you know, further driving unless we know which direction we're going.
Sure. So the etched concrete, which is the least costly, and that's what option two.
Correct.
I guess on that one there, that river flow pattern is, what's the, are there any issues for dangers of individuals climbing on that? My concern, particularly with the faucet and also the second one, the river flow pattern, is people, kids, you know, climbing on and then getting hurt. And we, the city, has an issue.
Yeah. Yeah, we certainly are concerned about liability for ourselves as well. I think the intent here is based on working with the form liner companies and their opportunities. They're typically limited to about a two-to-three inch release process, which does make it less climbable for addressing. I certainly expect that people are going to be rubbing against it and, you know, finger tracing, because it certainly is going to be visually interesting. But we're a little less worried about the climbability. I do think that the basalt columns themselves probably have a greater attraction on that front, because people climb them currently. I hate to have signers saying you can't do something. I mean, I don't live in signage clutter, but, you know, I do think it's something we want to make sure that we're addressing. But we feel that there are opportunities here still worth pursuing. It's also probably why we've looked at the other alternatives to the basalt columns too.
Sure. And then the perforated metal, it seems like that would be the least wall with liability issue.
I think that probably is. It would be a lot harder for folks to work through some of the small sizes of the hole, and I think that's something we'd certainly be looking at to minimize things that people could really get their fingers wedged into. We're also limited by, you know, we aren't going to have large size holes, that's just an issue for debris and also for head entrapments. So we'd be looking at smaller, you know, finger-in, smaller size holes, but with a lens towards non-climbability.
Okay. And I noticed that the etched concrete and also the perforated metal are the least costly of two.
They are. So we kind of get custom for less, which also we thought made it a little bit more appealing.
Sure.
An opportunity for lighting, I think, on either one is something we're interested in pursuing, which would not add as much cost either, especially in consideration to the savings from the basalt, and allows us to better tie into the tide arch form and the lights there, so that there can be a little bit more continuity.
You also said, I believe, that that pattern and with the backlighting is not in many places.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Melissa, for option three, what do you expect that the lighting would add to it from a cost perspective?
We've done some preliminary pieces, and it's probably going to be about $80,000, give or take. It depends largely on what type of lighting we use. We have not talked to DKS yet, so we've been talking mainly with Zainer, who is a mass fabricator of the custom imagery. As far as options, looked at, okay, how do we actually access lighting behind the panel, where are those additional materials? How does that reflect? But we've kind of built that into the price, that actually would be potentially less if we don't light it. It'd still be about comparable to the concrete, but it's just that the lighting provides that little extra that people were interested in having, so we wanted to make sure that was included.
Okay, so would that be included in the cost for option three right now?
Correct.
It is. Oh, okay, great to know.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So from my perspective, I, and I really appreciated Commissioner Willard's question around the height, because when I thought about the height and the fact that at its tallest, it's 10 feet, it really seems to me that the basalt isn't the greatest option. If we were talking a 20-foot-high structure where you could really see the basalt for all it's worth, I could, I think I could see it being more beneficial to have that, you know, more simulation of nature in a larger scale. But given the size of it and then the cost of it, I think my preference is probably option three, just from the potential for the design flexibility that it has. And actually, as the times change, we could decide to change the design of it, you know, in 20 years if we chose to, you know, because it was, you know, dated where with the concrete, and it is what it is.
Any other questions or comments? I have. Go ahead, Jerry.
I agree with Mr. Heberlein and his considerations there completely. I think the option two tends to be kind of tacky, actually, to use the word, and particularly because it is so commonly used to line highways, and we have some suggestions of that actually elsewhere in the.
The entrance.
Yeah, in the entrance from Five on the Wilsonville Road. And I really think that the basalt idea is wonderful, and in the scale that the illustration has, it's spectacular, but I agree that on the smaller scale, it's less spectacular and probably not worth that expense. What is the material, what is the metal? Is it polished aluminum or stainless steel? What is it?
We have options on that front, and so it is a finished aluminum grade, and the treatment can vary depending on color. We'd probably be looking at having it in some kind of a tone, probably a charcoal or a black, so we can have a white backing, so that the lighting will actually have a more reflective surface to go off of. But yeah, we probably wouldn't be looking at silver, but we'll probably do a couple of different visuals just to take a look at best the direction that's chosen to see which seems to best marry with the site.
I think that the potential for variation in it is quite attractive, and the material is durable. I would opt for options for the metal wall, and I especially am intrigued by the possibilities of the lighting.
Yeah, okay.
Let me ask a question here. The pricing that you've shown, was that for aluminum?
Yeah, that's for the perforated metal.
Okay. All right, great. Yeah, I like the perforated metal as well, particularly because I think it lends itself to variety. I'm assuming that the lighting can be changed to, of course, however we want to do it. I have in my mind some creativity there for that lighting. But I think, you know, for the cost and what we get in, you know, the perforated metal with the image pattern, I like that. And I think that it would really show off well, so I like option three.
Nobody has talked about the water feature yet.
It's costly.
Yeah, it's attractive. We have, Wilsonville's already known for three other water features, and it would be nice to have a fourth, but I'm not sure that it is worth that expense, and there are other ways to enhance that wall, especially the metal one.
Yeah, to just add to that, when I first looked at this, I like option four, but for that price tag and, you know, in what Commissioner Greenfield said, I agree with that, that it's too costly, but it would be nice. But I think for what we're doing here and looking at cost, also patterns and things we could do with that metal, I think that's a better bang for the buck.
I am now forgetting the details of the plaza and so forth. Were there ponds and so forth in the plaza that we had discussed? Are there water features there?
No, there is no water feature in the plaza currently.
There isn't?
No.
So one of the things we had talked about, I guess, were stone water, stone water water features, and I thought maybe those would have some fountain or something on them.
There is a rain garden, but it is primarily planted and serving its function versus being an interactive or. a interactive or artistic component. Um, we're fairly limited, given that existing infrastructure we have to tie in. So that became a slightly more traditional version.
Well, I, I was actually not thinking about an interactive water feature. I was thinking about the white noise you were talking about, that a, uh, a fountain would make that noise aside from the wall.
Correct.
Um, very well.
Any other questions?
Go ahead. Go ahead. Uh, Commissioner Greenfield, uh. On that slide, a water, a water, uh, slide, um, that there's a, a multi-spout fountain shown on one of the, one of the images. And it seems to me that that, that could be installed in front of that, uh, metal wall or, or elsewhere in the, the, uh, the landing. Uh, and the expense of that cannot be too great. We have a small version of that in our own little park across our, from our house in, um, Peter Park. Uh, so I, I, I think that, uh, that should be explored as a possibility, some completely separate, uh, water installation, not, not necessarily a cascade, which I think would be very nice, but quite expensive, but I think those spouts would probably not be very expensive.
Okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Uh, I just have a question about, um, option number three, which is my favorite as well. But I wanted to know during the day, what is that going to look like if it's not super lit up? Is it just going to be a flat wall or is there going to be a texture we can do? What kind of options do we have?
Yeah, so the, the top images are all daytime photos. I realize they're small, um, so it's, it's hard to, hard to see, but you still get an image. Um, and so it will be that, you know, kind of water rippling over, over stone as an image, literally. And so you'll still be able to see it, and that's probably why playing with the, the color of the actual metal as well as the backing so that it reads both day and then the lighting at light so that we can make sure it's equally and/or differently invisible. But we certainly want to make sure that we strike that right balance. And so we're really waiting to get that.
The image would be a low-relief etch.
Yes, um, it actually, the image is perforated metal. So it's purely caused by removing the metal in, in different sized dots. And so it all kind of like dot matrix, uh, going old school, um, but it's pretty impressive.
Um, if I may, uh, commissioners, I would note, this is, oh, sorry. This is Miranda Bates, planning director at the city. If I may, just briefly, commissioners, um, there's actually an example of this in our community. Uh, if any of you have driven, um, on I-5 north, um, between the two Wilsonville exits, the brand, well, it's not a brand new building, I guess, the remodeled building, um, off of Parkway where INE Construction is, uh, the building that INE, um, went into that's just north of Grace Chapel. Um, on the I-5 side, uh, they have a, uh, metal screen that was put up. Um, and in the center of it, uh, they'd used this method of perforated metal to create their logo. They actually had to get a sign waiver in order to do so with the development review board. Um, and so that logo is purely created out of, um, different sized holes, different, um, punched holes, create that logo. Um, it's very noticeable, it's consistent. At the same time, it's subtle in the sense that it's like there aren't additional colors or moving pieces or anything like that, uh, but you can see the logo. So that, that's an example that you could go by. Um, anyone in Portland, if you've been down by the, um, if you know, if you go to Portland and you go to Goat Blocks, there's a, a parking garage that has a metal perforated, um, door and it has like goats basically, um, kind of playing, I guess, would be the scene. I have a photograph of it, so I would be happy to send it to all of you just so you can get a sense of how that image pops. Like when I was walking by the garage door itself, it just looked like a screened metal wall. And as soon as I stepped 10 feet away from it, or maybe even less, uh, the image of the goats really popped out, um, and are very like easy and clear to see and it, and it looks really cool. So I would just share with you that we do have a couple of examples here in our backyard. Um, and, uh, you could check those out.
Hey.
Thank you, Miranda.
Thank you. Any other comments?
We're going to have, as I recall, um, another ramp on the west side of the highway that is also going to have a retaining wall. And so I don't hate option two for those walls.
Okay.
Because it is consistent with the design.
Okay.
Have you had enough feedback?
I think so. I think we have a clear direction.
Yes, yeah, very great. Um, thank you so much for the feedback and, uh, we will bring this to council. Thank you so much.
Thank you and congratulations on your promotion. Uh, see, see, this is what happens when you show up in front of the commission numerous times. So keep the good work up.
All right. Thank you.
Uh, next work session item is, uh, transit oriented development work. Ms. Bates, are you going to introduce, uh, the item?
Uh, yes, Chair Masbah, thank you, planning commissioners. Um, the next item on our agenda tonight is pretty exciting. Um, many of you were involved with the adoption of the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan that we adopted in 2020. Uh, in that process, one of the projects that was identified as a priority strategy was doing, uh, looking into a potential affordable housing project at our Smart Central site. There's a property there, um, at Smart, um, that, uh, provides a city-owned land and an opportunity to do an affordable housing project. As all of you are aware, every year we report on the annual housing, uh, report. Uh, we report information about housing development in the city, what's been permitted, the amount of growth. Uh, we've also been tracking affordability, particularly over the last five years, and the cost of housing in the city of Wilsonville. Uh, so all of you are very aware, um, of the state of housing, uh, in our city, in our county, in our region, uh, and the need for us to provide, uh, affordable housing opportunities, uh, both, uh, affordable at market rate, but also subsidized affordable housing projects. Having city-owned land is a huge opportunity to do just that. Um, and so this really became a priority action of the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan for us to look into a development opportunity study, uh, that could result in a partnership with a private entity to develop that housing. Uh, in this past year, uh, we've been advancing a number of the strategies from the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan, this being one of them. We started this project about six months ago, uh, in partnership with a consultant team, uh, that the project manager will introduce here in a moment. Uh, it was also prioritized by the city council in their goal-setting session earlier this year. Um, so this is a big priority for the city. We're excited to be working on this project. Um, I'm going to introduce, um, both Kim Riebel, who's the project manager for this, as well as Dwight Brishir, our transit director, um, who are really working with the consultant team on this. And I'll let them introduce the rest of the team that is here this evening to share with you an update on the project and get some input from you.
All right. Thank you, Miranda. Again, I am Kim Riebel, senior planner with the city. And I'm happy tonight to introduce our project team that is with us today. Uh, Brian Vanaman and Chris Zahas from Leland Consulting Group, uh, as well as Matt Brown and Tim Schneider from YBA Architects, who've helped work on some of these site design options. As Miranda mentioned, she provided good background, of course. We started working this summer on looking at the site more directly. Uh, this was recommended by the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan that we do a deeper dive on some opportunities on the site, just to be sure that, uh, the, the ideas that came out of that process, uh, are achievable and feasible. Uh, so with that, the project team put together an existing conditions report, uh, which we've included in your packet. We published this in August. And this was really intended to help our, the city council as an initial step to guide their discussion on some bigger ideas about vision for the site and in particular who, who they would hope to serve in terms of an affordable housing development, as well as thinking about, uh, what type of desired site amenities, uh, we might like to see here. Uh, we had this, uh, discussion with council and based on the feedback we got from them, uh, we started getting into a bit of a deeper dive on both site design options based on some different site conditions or, um, different alternatives that could be the basis for how we put together a development program. Uh, we've looked at funding, potential funding sources and how these types of projects either might or might not be well-suited for funding. And, um, with that, we, we put together these site design options that the team will walk through that we've included in the packet, uh, really as a way to more concretely visualize the ideas that council had back in the fall. Um, with that being said, we know that ultimately, if we choose to go down the path of soliciting a developer, uh, it's really through that process that we'll really refine more of the details about the size and scope of project. But this is really an attempt to capture what's feasible and what's possibly achievable on this site. Uh, so with that, we will be sharing this information with council on Monday at their work session and, um, getting into some more details about possible city roles in the project as well, with the hope of putting together a request for qualifications and then a secondary step of a request for proposals, uh, early sometime next year. So with that, we're here tonight to get these in front of you, you know, knowing that, uh, this group was very influential in helping to put together the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan. We'd like to get your feedback and ideas about a lot of the design considerations and how, how this site, uh, can, can really be visualized in the future. Uh, so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Brian, who will share, uh, some more details on this work and lead you all in a discussion.
Thank you, Kim. Um, if somebody could confirm that you all can see my screen, that would be a great start. Um, great.
Yes, we can.
Um, great. Okay, uh, I am going to, uh, very briefly and quickly walk you through, um, the material that, uh, Miranda and Kim talked about. Um, I do have, uh, several colleagues here, um, Chris Zahas, also with Leland Consulting Group, Matt Brown and Tim Schneider with YBA Architects. And, um, they can jump in, um, in the Q and A phase of this if there are detailed questions about the designs. Um, I tend to be a, a project manager for development projects. I'm not an architect myself. That would be YBA and they, so they'll, they'll be able to answer detailed questions. But, um, so, um, first, we just wanted to brief you. You, you all know this site well, uh, but, um, this is material that we've shared with, uh, the council and, and also with developers that we've talked to about the site, um, all of whom are interested thus far and, and potentially being future developers for the site. Um, we call it the TOD site. It's about an acre and a half, um, and, um, some notable features here, we're showing a half-mile radius from the site. Um, it, it's important that commercial services such as grocery store, uh, pharmacy, food, other food options are just over a half mile away, uh, to the south and ultimately, uh, uh, across the, the highway in the town center. That's an, that's an important criteria for affordable housing funding sources and, and also a great amenity for folks that will live there in the future. All the amenities available are one, are, are wonderful just to the west. Um, obviously many jobs in the immediate surroundings and, and also obviously, uh, a wealth of transit both locally in Wilsonville and, uh, to the north via west and to the south, uh, in Salem and Kaiser. Those are some of the site near area considerations. Um, we, I'm not going to dwell on it, but certainly, um, some of the natural, um, resource areas immediately to the west, we, we just mapped because we wanted to be certain that they don't constrain development on the site. Um, they do limit what's, what's possible just to the west and to the northwest. So, um, I'm going to talk about a few principles that we talked about with council. Um, and, uh, the first was council's significant interest in active ground floor uses. We're showing, uh, three different affordable housing projects recently built here or, um, in the design phase on the left. Um, and, um, uh, this was an important priority for council, active ground floor uses. We did spend some time talking about the somewhat subtle distinction between commercial uses and, and active ground floor uses. Um, uh, the, the active ground floor uses, uh, could be things like, uh, community rooms, educational spaces, fitness areas. Um, and, and those more community-oriented uses, um, actually work better with, uh, the affordable housing funding sources. I can say more about that, but, uh, at a high level. Um, we also wanted to integrate, uh, plaza space at the ground level, and this was something the council was interested in. The council also asked us to, to talk further about best practices in transit-oriented, uh, development. And we're showing here a Ranco station, part of a Ranco station, which to my mind is, is the, the best example of transit-oriented development in, uh, the Portland region, possibly the whole Pacific Northwest. Some of the things that are happening here are, are both affordable housing, market rate, uh, housing, senior housing, uh, mix of uses in terms of grocery, other retail, and it's certainly multimodal. You can get around this chamberhead, obviously, by transit, by walking, by biking, by car and other modes. Um, so this certainly is a TOD best practice. Uh, it also covers a very, a large area, um, many, many acres, much larger than the site we're talking about tonight. Really, in some ways, potentially more applicable to the town center, but we wanted to show this. Um, so going into the site itself, as I mentioned, we've got an acre and a half site here and significantly a almost 400-car, uh, park and ride lot just to the north that is owned by TriMet. And, um, I'm going to show three options, um, and, and some sub options, so hopefully it makes sense. Uh, option A, B, and C. Here we're seeing option A, which we think reflects the council's guidance most closely. Um, and, uh, depending on whether there's, uh, four or five stories, so option A1, I apologize, it's hard to read, but A1 has four stories, A2 has five stories, and we're talking about, uh, 94 to 123, uh, housing units on the site, depending on the number of floors. Um, some other notable features, um, are a, a green space, uh, potentially for daycare or, or just, or for residents or for community members here. Um, some hardscape spaces on the south and, uh, east side of the building, wrapping around that, uh, active block ground floor space, uh, here. And then we've also designated an area for a smart transit welcome center, just over a thousand feet here. Um, uh, as I mentioned, parking is important. Um, in most options we're showing, parking for this project take, take place on TriMet's park and ride lot, which is not fully occupied. It was not fully occupied, uh, before, uh, COVID and, and it's not fully occupied now. We've talked with TriMet and they're open to sharing some of the spaces, um, on their, uh, park and ride lot. Um, uh, one other thing, we've tried to emphasize two and three-bedroom family-sized units, um, per council's recommendation as well. Here's a massing from the south side of option, oh, one B or one, uh, sorry, A2. Um, and, uh, there you can see one other feature I'll point out is three mature Douglas Ferteries that we've tried to retain, uh, in the design. Uh, we also have parking on site for the active ground floor uses. Here's from the north side, uh, showing, uh, all the bikes, uh, all the buses parked, uh, in the transit center. Here's option B. Um, this, uh, option we drew up because it, it most closely follows the city's existing zoning code for, for this site, which is PDI, which also then references PDC and PDR. Um, there's some challenges with this existing zoning code when applied to what we're trying to do here. Um, and, and some of them have to do with the commercial space. It really drives us actually to have multiple small buildings, which could be neat. Um, but it also, uh, will cost a lot because there's a lot of corners and edges and faces, a lot of internal circulation, and then quite a bit more, uh, commercial space than we would otherwise like to, uh, to, to do. We don't see that amount of commercial space being highly leasable in this area. Uh, it doesn't fit well with affordable housing funding sources and it would actually require us to grab quite a bit more parking in order to park it adequately, um, uh, to the, to the city's standards. So we, we see this option under the current zoning as, as, uh, as problematic. Um, we also have a couple of options where we look at what happens if we're not able to park, um, on the TriMet site, uh, where we park just on, uh, the TOD site itself. And it really limits the number of units that we can get on the site naturally, uh, um, between. 55 and we really can't fit four floors, which would give us almost 80 units. So we're really stuck with potentially somewhere on 55 units. That's a challenge. First of all, it doesn't provide as many affordable housing units. And then secondly, it's hard to, it's not a good fit with the funding sources that are out there and the operational economics of a project like this, which really want about 100 units, potentially more. So this is kind of the reason that we think that sharing parking on the TriMet site is so important. We have a lot of data and information about each one of the options here. I'm not going to go through it all, but happy to come back to it if anyone wants. Before I get to the questions, I just want to reiterate something that I believe Kim said, which is, you know, I just saw some of the presentation given by Mig on design for the Ped Bridge. Obviously, we have not gotten into the level of detail that they did and we're close to it. But our purpose here is to kind of draw some broad outlines and parameters of the type of development that you would like to see, that the council would like to see, the community would like to see on the site. We plan to put this into a developer request for qualifications and proposals document to give them some direction on the types of scale, size, massing amenities, site design. And then as Kim said, we really will hope that they will bring their creativity to this, respond to the designs we provide and hopefully do something even more creative and better than what we've prepared. So it's really a prompt for their future creativity. Having said that, we wanted to hear from you about whether these options are consistent with the city's long-term housing goals and if there are other site design considerations. Before I stop talking and ask you to answer these questions, I do want to say that we, from the affordability point of view, our assumption based on our financial analysis and review of available financing tools is that most or all of the units in any of these options would be available to residents at 60% area median income and below, and probably a small percentage, maybe 10%, maybe more, would be available to residents and households at 30% AMI. So a range of affordability, but ranging from very low income to kind of workforce housing. So with that, I will close and look for your input.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
When you look at the options, and I know the council has guided on, I believe, option A1 and option A2. But my first question is, on all of these options, in particular A1 and A2, are there elevators in the building?
There would be, yes.
Okay. And that's on any of the options?
Most likely. I mean, when you get down to a three-story building, potentially you could have, you could potentially not have an elevator. But really, you know, our core recommendation is, or what we're focusing on, something like A with a four or five story building, and that would have an elevator.
Okay, I asked that.
Almost, yeah, yeah.
If for some reason we did go with, let's say, option B, I believe that's got three floors, if I remember, no, that's got four floors. That's option C that has the three.
Yeah.
If there's seniors in the building.
That's right.
We certainly couldn't, I don't want to ask seniors to walk up three levels of stories, I mean, three floors. So that's why I mentioned that, because I don't think that would be feasible. But looking at the option A1 and option A2, my question centers around the number of units. And I'm assuming, I think I'm going to answer my own question here. Option A1 is four stories, option A2 is five. So the difference there between 94 units and 123 is based upon that additional floor. Is that correct?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. And then based on that, I mean, the parking is across the street. So with option A and B, there are 16 onsite parking spaces, right?
Very much. Yes, there are 16. And the intent of those onsite parking spaces is to serve primarily this ground floor use here.
Okay, got it. And so none of those then would have electric charging stations or would any of those be dedicated for handicapped?
You know, we hadn't gotten to that level of detail. That's a good question. Matt, you got any thoughts on that?
Yeah, so, yeah, great question, Aaron. They would, there would need to be some.
Absolutely.
Spaces. And it's an interesting question, actually, with regard to the sort of off-site parking stalls and whether or not in terms of contemplating the total stall count required, some of those might have to be converted to accessible stalls. What I would imagine is that the preponderance of required accessible stalls, ADA stalls so-called, would be among those 16. But we might actually put a few, might try to convert a few of the stalls that are kind of closest to the site to make up the balance, just so that we don't have, you know, sort of four or five accessible stalls that kind of dominate the onsite stalls. One other thing, well, quickly there is that, again, as Brian pointed out, you know, down the line a bit, maybe I could very much see some of the onsite stalls being shared use, you know, or joint use stalls where during business hours, maybe they're available for the active uses, which is a, you know, it's a zoning code requirement, so to provide that parking for that, for those uses. But potentially could be, you know, converted to residential parking in off-peak hours or a whole day.
Okay. And then the electric charging, does anyone know if there are electric charging stations in the parking across the street?
I do not believe so. Dwight, Dwight might be able to weigh in there as to the availability or any plans?
Yeah, currently there are none. We've been in, well, the five years that I've been here, we've spoken to TriMet a couple of times when we've had a request for charging. And they have charging, TriMet does, at other lots. And they say based on the lack of usage there, they are not right now encouraged, you know, or motivated, I should say, to install electric charging. They said if the other lots, you know, that changes, then they may, they may take it up.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we all know that electric vehicles are something that's being moved forward. So if we have some flexibility, I think we should think about that for future. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the commission?
Yeah, I'll go next.
Go ahead.
One of the things I'm thinking of on this is the residents of this development at these interim levels will most likely want access to the commuter train. And the commuter train has such limited hours, it's really intended for eight to five jobs. And the commuting hours accommodate those. It stops at 8:00 PM is the last time I looked, and it doesn't run on weekends. So it's, the commuter train is not operating at a time that really truly makes this transit oriented. So I think to you, Mr. Frisher, is TriMet at all open to running that commuter train for extended hours and extended days?
Well, in recent conversations with TriMet regarding this particular development, they are very, very motivated to see not only this development go in, but similar developments go in where land is available. They need density to increase the ridership on west, which is a goal of all of ours. And so, I mean, there is certainly plenty of transit and Smart runs a very, very robust transit system in Wilsonville. And so those residents that would need access to grocery stores or access to Salem, Canby, Tuolton, some of those places that Smart goes, would have quick and easy access, probably better than anywhere else in the city of Wilsonville. We're looking at probably 300 to 320,000 trips a day out of that transit center for Smart alone, and that doesn't include the west train. So, and this is pre-pandemic, so our numbers have dropped, but we expect, very much expect to get back there and fairly soon.
I agree. My two special needs kids, and they, the Smart bus is a figure for our family here in Wilsonville. But I know that I do have a 21-year-old that is, would love to get a job with Amazon. And finding transportation to Tuolton or somewhere where the nearest Amazon distributions are is hard for her since she doesn't have, since she doesn't have public transportation outside of Wilsonville. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir, go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, so, I guess to the two questions, option A2, I think is my preferred, or, you know, if I had to go to a second preference, it would be A1. In my perspective, options B and C are non-starters. I don't, I don't think they really align with the goals that we're trying to achieve with this concept of transit oriented development and some affordable housing. Beyond that, one thing I thought of in terms of design considerations, given the distance that I'll say the north end of the parking stalls are away from the apartment, maybe something to consider would be a covered walkway that goes along the west side of the parking area so that the residents could have a place, a little bit sheltered from the rain, not having to walk something on the order of 450, 500 feet to the front door of their apartment in pouring down rain.
Do you have any additional suggestions, additional input?
No, I concur. The highest density we can do practically in there, the better.
My concern is that this is isolated. The ground floor activities are, to me, a positive kind of aspect of this project. As a transit center, I hope that that provides some viability for some coffee shops and those kinds of things for people who are using the transit center in addition to the people who live there. But I always worry when we start talking about affordable housing, but then it's isolated from the rest of the community. And when we talked about this, oh, earlier in the year, maybe at the end of last year, we talked about, wouldn't it be nice for Barber Street to be a corridor that, this could be an anchor that extends then in the future east and west and connects the town center with various mixed-use activities all the way to Louisville. Until that happens, though, it's sitting in the middle of an industrial kind of area, light industry. I understand that that is jobs, but it's also really isolated. And I don't know if there's going to be a solution to that. I know this is a really good opportunity for TOD and its city-owned land and all that, but I worry about the long-term look of it. Are there any thoughts by the consultants on any of this?
Yeah, I'd love to take a first shot, Commissioner, and then Matt, please weigh in. I mean, first of all, I agree with your sentiments, all of your sentiments. The isolation is something that we talked about with staff, we talked about that with developers, and then we talked about it internally. You know, we talked about to go back, we certainly have talked about both the positives of the site and some of the drawbacks. And as we've had internal, external conversations, we've certainly pointed out, you know, the long-term bike and pedestrian connections to the town center and the bike lanes on Barber and all the great amenities to the west. But, you know, we do struggle a bit with how to address or resolve the issue of isolation. One of the things that we've talked about is that actually immediately west, first of all, there's all the transit, which is an amenity. But immediately west is actually lovely, the large oak trees and green space here. And so that doesn't decrease the isolation, but it's certainly a nice amenity and, you know, families can, probably whether it's an improved area, but families can walk up here and enjoy it potentially, or even look out. When you get to the site itself, I think that, I don't have any really good images here, unfortunately, but of what we're trying to do, but I think YBA has done a good job of creating some space. You can just see in front of each of the units, some kind of semi-private space where people could put out chairs, their own planters, and kind of claim some green outdoor space just outside of the ground floor units. And then we've tried, there's actually some nice trees on the south side. And to your point, you know, we've created at least the opportunity for some onsite green space and then active ground floor uses. So, you know, we share your concern. We think we've tried to address some of it as best as possible. But Matt, any more thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, likewise, I agree. It is somewhat isolated, right? And it's mostly industrial development around it to the south and, you know, generally into the east. So that is a challenge. And I think that, you know, yeah, developing Barber as a more, you know, placemaking oriented walkable corridor with other sort of mixed-use development would be fantastic. And, you know, establishing the ability to connect better to Villebois and the energy there in the long term would be great, you know. And so in the sort of Kinsman Boulevard, there's a lot of opportunity. I think in terms of the actual site design and working within the reality of kind of its current, you know, that what would be the initial isolation, we kind of opted for, we explored the idea of kind of creating a more urban edifice on Barber, but ultimately opted to kind of set it back, not only to preserve those large trees, but also to create a south-facing kind of communal space that at least gives it something. It's a kind of linear, it's a very linear site. You know, Frisher Wood was mentioning the, you know, the sort of, the other challenge of an elevator building, right, is that there's a sort of scale consideration and the construction economic reality about going four or five stories with elevators. You usually want to be around 90 to 100 units at least to really make it kind of pencil and work out, make it efficient, so you don't have a lot of cores that take away the net-to-gross ratio on the building. So that means we end up with sort of a long linear, you know, building. So we've tried to sort of sculpt this south-facing space. It gives an opportunity for a slightly more potentially iconic, you know, end of the building at the intersection of the transit driveway and Barber, you know, which developers may or may not take advantage of, obviously. But, and then just sort of subtly shifting the building. We've got a couple of other buildings that transitioned oriented developments in Gresham recently where it's taken the idea of like an urban village in terms of the actual architectural expression. Obviously, the massing at this level doesn't really justice to that yet, but, you know, there are ways to sort of craft the massing so that it breaks down in scale, almost like large terrace housing or, you know, smaller segments that would resemble sort of an urban frontage in a, you know, a more fine-grained fabric. And I think those kinds of things architecturally would do great, it would be great to create a there there in spite of the fact that, you know, there isn't, you know, that much around it yet that would resemble what it is.
I didn't mean to imply that the design is sterile or unattractive and so forth. I didn't mean to imply that the design is sterile or unattractive and so forth. This is nice design, you've done a good job with the public spaces and the semi-private spaces. It clearly is a site that has a lot of amenities nearby. It's just that nobody lives nearby. That's the sense of isolation that I was voicing. And if you've already brought this up to the, to the council, I would hope that we could send, renew our call, I should say, from the commission to the council, to look long-term at this corridor and its potential to do placemaking, as you mentioned, east and west, so that this site will serve as an anchor to then stretch, as opportunities come up, to continue this kind of mixed-use kind of development, at least on the front of this, this corridor, so that we have connectivity. And this won't happen unless we make a long-term point of it. I mean, I'm, I'm one of the people who deeply believes that in order for things to happen, we need to plan to make them happen. So, I'm, I'm raising that because I would hope that we could keep that vision alive. Otherwise, otherwise, this will just stay as an isolated community.
Chair Maspah, I think that's a really good point.
Very well-designed and very pleasant, but isolated.
Commissioner Maspah, could I speak?
Go ahead.
I have a question on the distance from the, the property to the proposed I-5 bridge. Does anyone know what that distance is?
Well, so, here we have the site, and we have a half-mile radius, and that's linear, right? So, it looks like it's about a half-mile. The bridge takes off right here, I believe. That's probably a little less than a half, you know, quarter to a half-mile, so a five to a ten-minute walk.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
I think the character of that site is going to change remarkably after the bridge is installed and town center is up and thriving, and this location is right between town center and Villable. I think that the sense of isolation is going to be considerably reduced. But I do agree that Barber Street can be and should be more, more populated than it is.
I agree. I, I also see, and I'm a innovation guy, if we had some kind of, I'm going to call it a people mover, that went across the I-5 bridge and connected over to the transit center, I think that would be something to consider for the future. That would certainly be helpful.
Autopiloted pods, Aaron.
Yeah.
So, I would note that as part of the I-5 padbridge project, we've actually been coordinating with Dwight. We are designing that bridge to be able to accommodate a potential future autonomous shuttle that would originate from somewhere around this location and cross over to the pedestrian bridge. So, we're, we're already thinking about that. And we've actually noted that in some of our conversations with developers as well. They were very intrigued. I would want to point out one other thing, too. I think we, we acknowledge the conversation around potential isolation, and, you know, I know it did come up during the equitable housing strategic plan process as well. And our, we've had a couple of conversations with Trimet, and again, this is much more of a long-term conversation that will be had. They do have some policies around transit-oriented development, particularly where they have underutilized park-and-ride sites. They have at least, I think they were very interested to hear that we were considering development on this property. Again, as Dwight said, it helps support their ridership. But also, you know, I think they're maybe thinking in the long term that there could be possibilities here as well. That being said, that is a conversation probably to be had for a different day, you know, much more well-thought-out process, but, you know, they're really looking to see how they can convert some of their underutilized pieces of payment into opportunities for housing and mixed-use development. And so, I just want to bring that up. I know it's not something we're going to solve as part of this conversation here, and we certainly don't want to get it, it to get into the way of doing something interesting on this site, but, you know, that thought has been out there and expressed, and so I think there, there could be other, other ways to make this more of a hub in the long term.
Well, and that's, that's what I was driving at, is not to, you know, to downplay this, the importance of this project. That was part of the task force as well, and this is a really good project. I just wanted to make sure that we put a pin in that idea of the whole corridor, a long range, so that we don't forget it. And I'm hoping that that is going to be in front of the council as well, so that they keep it in the back of their mind.
If I could real quick, address kind of some of the isolation, and I totally understand that, Trimet owns the lot. However, the city and Smart actually oversee the lot. And so, what that means is, we have had, and I continue to get calls on a regular basis for use of that lot. And so, realistically, if we pursued it, we could have events on that lot every weekend, farmers' markets, car shows, there's an electric car group out there that wants to do rides or whatever, I, you know, I can't think of the name right now, but I'm working with legal, because if we open that lot up, which I would love to do, and Trimet doesn't absolutely care at all, they don't want to know about it, how we're using that lot, if we open up the lot to groups, then, you know, it's, we have to open it up to kind of everyone. And so, we're trying to work with legal so that there are opportunities for that lot to stay busy pretty much all year round, on the weekends. During the week, obviously, it is being utilized for, for park-and-ride, and we expect, very much expect ridership to come back. But my hope is, is that that lot will become a gathering location for, for different events, concerts, whatever we can imagine. That is one of the biggest lots in all of Wilsonville. And I think the number of spaces is like, we thought it was three ninety-nine, I think it's four hundred and thirty spaces. And so, there is so much potential. I have a bus rodeo once a year on that lot, and it's plenty big, and it's a great event. And so, I think if I can get the planning commissioners to think of this spot, this is just, this building is just the beginning of, of a potential for something incredibly grand for, for Wilsonville. No, it's not town center, I get that, but it can be its own town center, and it can be, it become its own community if that's large. So, just my, just my two cents. I'm, I'm excited about it, so.
But it's a relatively short walk to town center, and even shorter walk to our new plaza.
Yes. And with the autonomous vehicles, that, we were looking at that possibly being the West terminus would be the transit center there, and it would turn around and go back across the bridge. So, that's kind of what we're thinking. But if we're in the early stages, I don't want to get too far ahead of myself on that.
Very good. Any other comments?
I'd just like to say that this is seeming a lot more real to me than it did previously.
That's great. That's our hope, and, and we, when we present to me with the council on Monday night, we'll be talking more about the next steps and how to move this forward, how to attract a developer and other such things, primarily in 2022 and beyond.
Yeah, you know, one additional piece here, when you started talking about the affordable housing piece, this is part of that plan, and I think it, you know, the way that you guys have presented it, the layout, I think this is an important piece of what Wilsonville will offer for affordable housing. I like it.
Um, this is going to, these units, affordable units are going to stay affordable in perpetuity, right?
So, the, the way this typically works is that, my short answer is it depends. Typically, the units are affordable for fifty or sixty years. Typically, the base requirement is thirty years, but usually, they end up, the requirement goes for longer than that. At the end of fifty or sixty years, the projects need to be reinvested in and recapitalized anyway. You know, I mean, they're, they're then sixty-year-old buildings, they knew it, needed a new infusion of funds to renovate them. And so, what happens most of the time is that at the end of those sixty years, the developer will get a new infusion of capital. Most, most of the money for this project will come from state and federal grant funds. So, then they'll get a new round of grant funds at the end of fifty or sixty years. It will then be affordable again for another sixty years. However, that's something, that's a really good point. It's something we will ask for, and the developer requests for proposals. You know, how long can you guarantee the city that, that this project will be affordable for?
Now, when the grant is redone or when the reinvestment is done, there is no, nothing that keeps it from becoming high-priced condos instead of affordable units, right? If that's where the capital comes from.
You know, it depends. On this site, it's a city-owned site, so there is affordable housing that is built that's not on publicly-owned sites. Here, the city has a lot more control. So, in the, in this process, the city will create a legal contract with the developer, and we can put whatever we want into that legal contract. You know, really, in perpetuity gets confusing, because again, you, you need to renew the building at some point, but, but the city can require, we, we can investigate what requirements to put in there. I'd say at a minimum, we're looking at fifty, sixty years and potentially longer.
Essentially, the city is leasing the land for a period of time to the developer.
It could be leased, or it could be sold. Even if it's sold, you can have covenants, restrictions, what's often called a disposition and development agreement. We can put all, all sorts of requirements in there, ranging from the, the period of affordability, the number of units, the, you know, that the trees in front must be preserved, et cetera.
Very well. Thank you.
Yep.
Commissioner Maspah, one last thing, real, real quick, because you guys were talking and I was thinking. So, one very random idea. So, the wetlands are a great visual resource to the West. If there was a rooftop plaza on the West, you could have some great views off into the wetland area from that site. So, if it's a possibility, that would be something that would be great to investigate.
Thank you.
Rooftop plaza, very good. Are we done with this? Are staff satisfied with the feedback that you got?
Yes, this is very helpful, and we will be sure when we present to council on Monday to summarize your key thoughts as we talk with them.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. The, the next item is the airport-related comprehensive plan updates. I don't know if, if the commission wants a five-minute recess, or should we just plow Nobody is jumping on that idea, so I guess you want to tough through and get it done. I will give the floor to Ms. Bechel again.
Thank you, Chair Maspah, commissioners. As you can tell, my staff are very busy, so the project manager for this project is yours truly, at least on the city side. On this project, I'll just briefly introduce it, and then I'll introduce the consultant team that's here with us this evening. As you all know, we are neighbors with the Aurora Airport, and there are impacts, both positive and negative, to the community because of that. And so, for this reason, historically, the city has participated and asked to have a voice at the table in, in different planning efforts around that airport and that facility for that reason, particularly with our, having the closest residential neighborhood there in Charbonneau. Other communities, both in the state of Oregon and across the country, have, who are adjacent to or have an airport within their boundaries, have policy statements and objectives in their comprehensive plan to address the types of things, the relationship that they want to have with the airport, the different planning efforts, the different types of impacts, and outlining that to kind of protect the city's interests to a certain degree. So, given our interest and perspective that we've had with the Aurora Airport, we felt that this would also be beneficial for the city of Wilsonville. We currently do not have those provisions in our comprehensive plan. So, we have hired a firm to, that is familiar with this type of planning, to help us with it. So, tonight, I'm going to introduce Chris Green, and I believe Brad Kilby is also here this evening of HHR, Harper Hoff Park, I just blanked on the P. Is it Parker? Hold on.
It's Peterson Regellas.
Thank you. I forgot.
But in case P is fine.
I remembered the Regellas, and I could not remember the P for a second. So, I'm going to handle it, hand it over to these gentlemen to lead the discussion with you this evening and to introduce the project's scope and timeline and a little bit more information about that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I'm going to share my screen here. All right, can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
All right. And everybody can hear me okay, it sounds like?
Yeah, Chris, now we're seeing your presentation mode, not.
Oh, oops, sorry about that.
There you go.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, so, yes, as Miranda said, and Chris Green was Harper Hoff Peterson Regellas or HHR, and then here was Brad Kilby from our office. We're here to talk to you a little bit about comprehensive plan policies that could relate to Aurora Airport and how the community would like to identify benefits, impacts, and just begin that conversation. And we wanted to get some feedback from the planning commission early in this process. We'll go through pretty quickly to talk about Aurora Airport and how it relates to city of Wilsonville, where it is and how it relates comprehensive planning and airports in general, and then talk a little bit about the process we're beginning and community engagement opportunities, and then finish up with some guidance, questions about those benefits, impacts, and stakeholders. So, this map shows a little bit of the location and how that relates to city of Wilsonville. Aurora Airport's here in orange, it's north boundary of the airport property is the Marion Clackamas County line, so it's pretty close, it's about one point six miles from that north boundary to the south city limit of Wilsonville. You can see the Charbonneau community there is the closest part of Wilsonville to the airport, but a lot of transportation connections through Wilsonville and just the proximity between the two. So, a little bit about the airport. It was founded in nineteen forty-three, so during World War II, the Army Air Force transferred it to the state of Oregon at the, and, or a few years after. few years after, actually, World War II. Uh, it's had a few different homes, uh, with the state of Oregon. Um, uh, Oregon Department of Aviation is the, um, agency that operates the airport now. Uh, the Department of Aviation has an aviation plan that sort of classifies the different airports, so does the state. Uh, Aurora Airport's considered a category-two, so it's a general aviation airport. It doesn't have, uh, commercial flights, but serves kind of a regional, um, need for other types of planes. There's a few, one of the other categories, uh, relates to federal funding. That's a big source of, you know, funding for, uh, airport facilities, and so there's fifty-seven airports and airport, airports in Oregon, um, that are eligible for, um, federal funds under something called the Airport Improvement Program. Uh, so this is one of those airports. It's, uh, not considered a hub, or, um, a secondary airport, but it is, it is a general aviation airport that, um, there is federal funding for in that system. It's the fourth busiest airport in Oregon, uh, after PDX, Hillsborough, and Bend, I believe, or, in two thousand eighteen, it had seventy thousand, or called total operations. So, the takeoff and landing, um, would be a few operations there, so basically, that's what that, that number refers to. Um, Oregon Solutions, uh, a few years ago, and, um, they were, they did a look at kind of what's, uh, who some of the users are. Some of the highlights is that, um, there's elastic space operators, which are basically, um, businesses that provide services directly to, um, plane flights, or related to planes that operate at the airport. Um, and then there's a few different business types there that are sort of aviation-related that are, are clustered there. Uh, it's a hundred forty-four acre site. There's one, uh, runway, and it's just over five thousand feet long. Uh, and then, and air traffic control, uh, was, uh, tower was constructed in twenty-fifteen for that, um, increase the, um, potential for flights coming in and out. Uh, there's been master planning on the airport, uh, over a number of different occasions over its, its lifetime. Uh, that's part of what Oregon Department of Aviation, um, part of their responsibilities in terms of managing the airport. And in two thousand eighteen, they applied for federal funds for a one-thousand-foot extension of that runway to the north. Um, so that led to, you know, some of the, um, controversy and conflict, and, um, that's, that's been a kind of piece of this in the background. Uh, as far as planning and airport compatibility, um, there is a lot out there at the federal and state level in terms of regulations, um, frameworks, best practices, things like that. Um, it tends to focus on, um, adjacent development, so encroachment onto air, airport operations has been, historically, all the way back to the Truman Administration, uh, in one of the pictures you see there, uh, an issue for airports, and so, um, looking at making sure that land uses that are, um, not safe to be around airports, or maybe too tall to be, um, in, in flight patterns, um, basically avoiding those encroachments. Uh, so again, looking at the location, just kind of showing this again, uh, the proximity. Um, so one of the ways that, um, there's different mapping that is done to, um, either provide notice, uh, to the, to the Federal Aviation Administration, FAA, about whether there's certain land uses that are being proposed in the vicinity. There's noise contour mapping that can be done. Um, Marion County, where the airport is located, has a mapped, um, county impact area. As you can see with this map, um, there's sort of an oval there that would, uh, it's a ten-thousand-foot oval there to the, uh, west and the south, and would continue if it crossed the county line, um, to encompass, um, some of Wilsonville, but, um, just basically stops pretty abruptly at the county line, the way they have that, that map. Um, and so, some of the goals for this project, um, clarifying now, how that air, the airport impacts the community, so looking at that map and making sure that, um, that City of Wilsonville has an opportunity to impact, uh, to a map where some of those impacts may be, um, recognizing some of those economic benefits that the airport has on the, the region and Wilsonville community. Um, but really, the big one here, um, as the city's been involved in the, in the past, and it's been a major topic of community discussion, and really, here, um, what we're looking to do is have policies that are in place, so that, as the many different governments that are working in the region, um, and at the state level, and everything else, that, um, City of Wilsonville has adopted policies that can, um, get a place at the table, uh, for Wilsonville, and, and some, uh, some clear policies in place. Um, and that would be in the form of comprehensive plan policies. Um, right now, as, as Miranda mentioned, there isn't, you know, comprehensive plan policies that, um, other communities adjacent to airports tend to address these in their, in their plans, and, um, so that would be the, the intended outcome of the process. Um, how that happens, um, well, taking a look at the comprehensive plan, some categories within the comprehensive plan of policies that are there already, that could be well-suited to talking about the relationship between the airport and the city. Uh, fire safety and emergency management, um, there's obviously safety concerns near an airport, but the airport also can provide services in times of an emergency. Uh, transportation, um, provides a transportation facility, but also, you know, there's concerns about the surface transportation network, and that, um, has an impact on Wilsonville. Um, economic development, so there's, uh, industrial areas within the city of Wilsonville, um, and the, the airport also provides employment to people in the region directly, and, and services. So, uh, again, kind of a impact versus benefit, uh, look at those. And then, environmental resources and community design is a section where things like air quality, water quality, noise, um, and those potential impacts could potentially be identified in policies. Um, and th- those are just some examples of kind of how that might overlap with the comprehensive plan. Um, in terms of a fit within the comprehensive plan, um, we think, uh, the areas of special concern that are identified in the comprehensive plan may be a good tool to use, um, because of the airport being, um, outside of the city limits, and, so areas of special concern are kind of the end of the comprehensive plan, um, and they're for areas that the general policies don't necessarily, um, cover. Like, a citywide policy wouldn't make as much sense, because there's such a specific, um, set of issues within an area. Um, and it does, it has been applied to areas that either were ones outside of City of Wilsonville, or the two most recent additions there are areas M and N, is the, uh, Basalt Creek and, and West Railroad areas, in the north. Um, so there's, there's definitely potential to address, um, the airport, um, in that, as, you know, potentially another area of special concern. Um, the project schedule we're looking at right now, we're, um, kind of wrapping up the kickoff and background, and moving into, um, outreach, so, um, I'll talk a little bit more about our approach to that, but we're here, um, talking to, um, the Planning Commission and City Council, uh, next month, going to get, um, beginning look at that. Um, during policy development, we will be, um, doing, um, we'll have, you know, a chance to gather feedback on, on drafts, um, and things like that, in terms of policies, and then, um, it would be adopted as an ordinance, so it would go through the hearing, hearing process of the Planning Commission and City Council. Um, as far as community engagement strategy, um, we are looking at making the, making the most of being remote, uh, like, like we are tonight, so we don't anticipate, um, that, that there'll be, or we can't assume that there'll be an opportunity for in-person engagements, so, um, trying to make the most of that. Um, directing, uh, kind of going for both breadth and depth in terms of engagement, so there's, um, affected stakeholders where this is a very big, uh, issue for them within the community. Um, they may have, um, in terms of where the residence is, business, um, needs, things like that. Um, we want to make direct outreach to those stakeholders, um, but we also want to get engagement from the broader community, um, making sure that they have a good online, um, place for, um, getting that feedback, and kind of talking through the issue, because it is very specific. It's one that doesn't, uh, come up that often, a lot of times, in local planning, so really just, um, making sure that we're hearing, um, from the community what some of those benefits and impacts may be, um, and then also, kind of framing, um, what the purpose of the project is. And then, um, recognizing, um, uh, applying equity lens in terms of not just who we engage in the process, but also policy outcomes, and looking at that when we consider different policies and what the outcomes may be. Um, some of those specific stakeholders that we believe may be, uh, interested in this process, or that we need to have feedback from, because they have such a direct connection to the airport. We have some of them listed here, uh, residents of different areas that are closer to the airport, uh, airport operators. We want to hear from different business types, owners and operators, um, from, uh, outside of the Wilsonville area, and French Prairie even, and agricultural, um, uh, economy there. Um, and then, some of the government agencies, and, um, civic and nonprofit groups. Um, so with that, I'm going to, um, pose some of the, um, questions in terms of where we could get some, uh, really important feedback, uh, from the Planning Commission early on in the process. Uh, the first one is about, uh, impacts or potential impacts of the airport to the community, um, and what some of those may be that should be addressed, uh, in comprehensive plan policies. Um, you know, we're at the very beginning of things, so the actual form of the policy, or even issue itself, can be pretty general at this point, but we want to make sure that we're, um, looking at every, every angle that would make sense to go into the comprehensive plan.
I think it's also, uh, important, this is Brad, just wanting to say that, you know, we're, uh, we're aware of the obvious impacts, like noise, um, odor emissions, things like that, traffic associated, because we, we've read through a lot of the, uh, information, uh, that has happened at the, at the local level here, and, you know, um, we're not unfamiliar with it. Uh, it happened out in Hillsborough, at the Hillsborough Airport. It continues to happen at PDX. Um, so it, it happens all over the place. One little bit, quick background, a lot of the, uh, airports are entrenched with a lot of advocates, a lot of money, and they're kind of, I wouldn't say that they're in line with, uh, railroads, but they are very, very protected, uh, in the federal scheme of things. So, we'll put it that way. And so what we're trying to do here is to simply give Wilsonville a voice, and put them at, put you at the table, so that, um, Marion County can't say, "Well, you don't have anything in there, so you don't really have any standing to make any, um, uh, bring, raise any of these issues that you're raising." So, we're wanting, we're wanting to put goals and policies into your comprehensive plan that recognize what those impacts are to the community, what the benefits are to the community, that, uh, that are associated with goals, that will put you at the table for those discussions when they go into their, um, uh, next planning, uh, evolution. We're looking for, like any other impact, that may not be so obvious, that you might want to make sure that we cover in these, uh, goals and policies.
Um, I have a couple of questions relative to the, uh, extension of the runway. Uh, is that extension so that larger, uh, planes can actually come in to the airport?
Great question. Um, we would be speculating if we answer that, just simply because we, we don't know, but it is definitely, uh, a request by a lot of that airport community to have a longer runway, uh, for, uh, more operations, so that they can have more operations. Um, and we, we have had some offline discussions about potential users of the airport, and, you know, a lot of airports, uh, especially airport operators, will see, uh, dollar signs when it comes to, in this case, a very specific location, to I-5. Um, so, I, I mean, we can answer that with a hundred percent certainty, but, uh, they certainly did ask for, I said, that's a pretty large extension for a small run, uh, small airport.
Okay. And, um, currently, do we know how many flights are actually coming in on average, daily?
Approximately a hundred and ninety-three a day.
Okay.
That's a lot.
Interesting, because, uh, where I live, I'm in one of those special, uh, areas that you outlined there, hmm, it's either C or D. I think I'm in C. And, uh, I regularly hear, um, helicopters and, and planes coming over, and sometimes they seem like they're very low. So, um, one of the things I'd like to, uh, encourage you to do is to invite the homeowner association, um, leadership, uh, to these meetings that you plan on having, uh, particularly in these, uh, areas of, uh, concern. I believe, I forget what you call them, but I do remember seeing C and D that was on the southern end there, uh, of Wilsonville.
Yeah, uh, um, so on that map, those are, um, kind of a variety of places. They don't necessarily relate to the airport, but I know in South, uh, South Wilsonville and Charbonneau are areas that we're looking at, making that kind of direct outreach you talked about, but if we're missing any areas, um, that you think could be impacted, that would be, that'd be really good to know.
Uh, I, I think from my perspective, if, if you draw a line that goes down the center line of the runway, and extend it all the way through Wilsonville, that is your primary area of impact.
It's your claim.
Yeah, that's right.
So, I would recommend not just focusing on Villabon and South Wilsonville, but draw the line, and that's going to cover most of East Wilsonville.
Yes.
Uh, I, I'd like to make a, an observation about the, the notion of, uh, master planning by Wilsonville relative to the airport, and that the idea of areas of special concern, or the idea of adding to our comprehensive plan, attention to the area around the airport as an area of special concern to Wilsonville. It certainly is an, an area of special concern to Wilsonville. It is not, however, like the areas of special concern in, uh, West Railroad and Basalt Creek. In those cases, those are areas that will probably, very probably, uh, end up incorporated in Wilsonville, where we have no intentions, that I'm aware of, of ever incorporating in the area around the airport. Uh, that leads to another consideration. It has been apparent for some time that the airport is completely lacking, virtually lacking, in its own infrastructure, uh, for services, and has had an eye on Wilsonville in particular, uh, to provide such services down the road. There was, uh, an, an effort some years ago, recent years ago, which I observed, actually, at a hearing in Salem, uh, to require, to pass a law requiring a municipality like Wilsonville to provide services without incorporation, uh, to the airport. Um, that is, it, it, well, I, I won't characterize it further. Um, it, it, it did not pass at that point, and I'm, I'm grateful for that. But the intention is clearly there for the airport to benefit, that the airport to benefit from its proximity to Wilsonville, not the other way around. Uh, and I'm also very much aware that the airport is bunked down in the middle, well, not in the middle, but on, in, uh, into the, or the middle, but in, into the protected area of rural reserves for 50 years. And that the airport represents a threat to that rural reserve, and that the threat specifically is to turn it into something like what has happened around the Hillsborough Airport, which would end up with a strip city along I-5 from Wilsonville to Salem. And at the great expense of some of the most productive farmland in the state, not to mention the country. This is a fundamental concern, I think, which has been pushed back to the airport development. And it's one that I very much sympathize with. I won't go further with that. But I think it is a misdirection to consider it a matter of Wilsonville's comprehensive plan as apart from Wilsonville's special concern, which is a defensive concern against the airport.
Commissioner Greenfield.
A few things there were, land use and, it sounds like regional land use and agricultural protection was one thing. And another thing I didn't have is one of the bullets on my presentation, public facilities and infrastructure. Those are two very important concerns. Thank you.
Commissioner Greenfield, if I may, just for a moment, this is Miranda Bates, Shell Planning Director. One note I would make about the areas of special concern in our comprehensive plan is that they are not all just areas at the edge of the city that are future master planned communities. It definitely has been that in the past, where we know that area has been brought into the urban growth boundary or will be, and we want to outline our goals for the planning of that area. And so that when we get to that point, it's kind of been delineated or given initial direction to then go into the master planning effort. But that is not the only reason that we've had areas of special concern before. There are other areas within that list that do not fall into that designation, but there's something that's unique about that area or that we want to call attention to in that area. So I just would make that known for the commission as you consider this.
Jerry, you want to clarify what you were saying based on what Miranda said?
Well, as I read the report, it seemed to me that it was being used as a wedge to liken treating the airport as an area of special concern as similar to, in some way, the West Railroad and Salt Creek areas. Because we have designated those areas as special concern, why don't we designate the airport as an area of special concern? And I think that's a misdirection.
What I'm hearing is those were areas that the city had interest in growth in. And the airport and its surrounding areas are areas that the city should be concerned about growing towards.
Yes.
Let me put it that way. I have been vocal on occasion that extending services south of the river is going to be expensive and inefficient for the city. And in fact, Charbonneau, today would be a mistake to do Charbonne because it just doesn't pay. It's a bad growth area. It's an efficient growth area. However, that impact then is what we should also worry about, is whether being forced into or being enticed into providing service to the area adjacent to the airport, the airport itself. Well, and if you, that's the thing, if you start thinking about extending service to the airport, then all the land between Wilsonville and the airport will normally have to be considered to make it more cost effective.
That's true.
That becomes the issue, is this is a slippery slope. And that impact on the city and its direction of growth could be something to be addressed here.
And definitely, we definitely hear you on that. The point about the rural reserves is probably the key statement there that reinforces the policy around extending your urban services down into that area. You just don't want to do it. So it makes total sense, and I think that's something that we would be looking to implement as a policy.
Well, I would say that Wilsonville does have some interest in addressing the airport in its comprehensive plan, but not in the same sense as it is addressing Salt Creek and West Railroad. It is, in fact, in order, it is to draw clear lines.
Boundaries.
Sure, sure. But where do you see, where would you see that falling within your comprehensive plan? Like, what section of your, would you put it under transportation? Would you put it, I mean, like, it kind of has its own standalone.
Services.
Yeah, that's probably why it isn't in the comprehensive plan.
Yeah.
There isn't an obvious place for it.
Which I think is why it makes sense in the special vision area, because it isn't a normal thing. It's not within the city's boundaries, so it isn't just part of the normal comp plan. I don't see anywhere else to put it.
It would be unusual in a comprehensive plan, I should think, to say, this is what we don't do. This is what we're not planning.
Unless it's policies, Jerry.
Yes.
I mean, this could end up shaping in the comprehensive plan as growth policies that the city will adhere to, to maintain efficiency of provision of services and compactness and those kinds of things.
Or commitment to boundaries.
Yes. But I do hear that if you don't have it somewhere in your city plans and policies, then you really don't have standing to talk about it. It's not your territory.
That's true.
Well, it's not our territory either way, but we don't have the opportunity to get a seat at the table to be part of the conversation. And I think that's really what we're trying to achieve, is the opportunity to be at the table, to be part of the conversation.
It's not in our territory, and I need a clarification. I'm kind of, I am in a legal ground here that is very unfamiliar to me. Where I come from, the city has extraterritorial jurisdiction, and that's the purpose of an extraterritorial jurisdiction, is areas outside of its territory where it, for one reason or another, has a veto power on growth and development. Is that not operational in the state of Oregon, Ms. Bates?
So, Miranda, do you mind? This is Ryan Adams, Assistant City Attorney.
I should have asked the court counsel, yes.
That's okay. No, usually I try and be as quiet as I can because I'd rather be seen and not heard unless it's necessary. But I will talk a little bit about this without getting into too much detail, because I'll represent to you that we're still in litigation on this right now. So essentially, what's going on here is the state, the OARs have what's called a state agency coordination program. And if you want a seat at the table, as Commissioner Heberlin was talking about, you need to be what is called an affected jurisdiction. An affected jurisdiction has a fairly specific requirement within the definition. One of those requirements requires us to have some reference to the airport, the ability to regulate some type of area around it, whether it be airspace or something like that, within our comprehensive plan. You know, council has over and over and over again said, hey, we want a seat at the table. This is one of the ways to make that happen because historically, the ODA has sort of, for lack of a better way to put it, made it somewhat difficult, in the city's opinion, to have our seat. And so that's frankly why we were in litigation in the first place, and one of the reasons at this point, we want our voice to be heard. So that's one of the main reasons for this. Would you disagree with that, Miranda?
That's a great summary. Thank you.
That's a good clarification, Ryan. I appreciate it. You didn't answer my question, are extraterritorial zones operational in the western states?
Not that I'm familiar with. I can do some research on that, but I haven't dealt with that, so I don't make that case.
So you don't have extraterritorial jurisdiction? This is the mechanism with which to have jurisdiction? That makes sense. Okay.
So for instance, I mean, I will give you, in Clackamas County's comprehensive plan, they regulate sort of the airspace coming off of the end of the runway there, even though the runway is in Marion County, right? It ends right there at that road. And so Clackamas County's comprehensive plan addresses the regulation of that airspace.
Well, that's a good precedent for including it in ours.
That's right.
Correct.
Yeah, that's right.
I'm going to move to the second question, but we can always go back to the first one. It's the same question, but about the benefits to the community and making sure we identify those. One thing I did mention in the presentation, kind of briefly, was that there is a lot of planning and regulation that's sort of focused on preventing encroachments into airport areas with elements and things like that. Is with the exclusive farm use zone that's around the airport now and the rural reserve, it's maybe not as big of an issue in the here and now as it might be in other places, but it sounds like there's a lot of concern about that. So, you know, that's also a way to look at benefits to the community and protecting those is looking at that area around the airport and compatibility of what's going in around the airport.
On the benefits of this, there are probably people in your community that do actually frequent or operate out of that airport. There probably are people in your community that are employed at some of the businesses at that airport. I mean, it definitely is indicative of an economic boom for somebody, that they want to grow their airport.
Absolutely.
We need to memorialize that in there, too.
Oh, okay. I'll jump in here on this one. So my, okay, full disclosure, I am a pilot. I'm a private pilot. I don't fly jets or anything like that. I fly small planes. And I work for a company at the airport. And I'm a resident of Wilsonville because I'm on this commission. My hope for this, and my comments to the city since this airport extension has been discussed, is that we take a balanced approach to it. My goal is that, to use some of Chair Mespa's words, that this is more of a symbiotic relationship, and that we don't use this as a defensive tactic, but we use it as a vehicle to ensure that the needs of both sides are being met. And some of the sides that are being met from the city is the economic side that the airport provides. And so I want to make sure that we don't focus so much on the negative that we lose sight of the positive. Because I'm even getting some of that from the project team, that there's more negative than there's positive. And I want to make sure that we do our best as a city to stay away from that and that we try to look at both sides of it.
Yeah, again, I would agree with that. I do believe that airports are very well protected. They are full of advocates. And if you just simply go in there and say, oh, we absolutely hate the airport, we don't want it to grow, we don't want anything to happen there, it's going to backfire on you. It's never going to, it's not going to go away. It's not going to stop. So the reason we want to voice it to table is that you can address those issues of compatibility and address the issues that concern you about the operations at the airport. And work cohesively with the ownership group of the airport, the Department of Aviation, all of those folks, to make sure that you're protecting your community the best way that you can, given that that resource is there.
Great. Well, then, along the lines of what are some of the potentially not obvious benefits we should document are, some of the life-saving benefits associated with the airport, both in the firefighting and in the search and rescue type of operations. That's my impression that a lot of that runs out of that airport. I could be wrong, but I'd like to see that documented, especially for the citizens of Wilsonville to really identify with those benefits at a deep level.
You're correct. Flight operates out of the airport, both for their helicopters and six-wing life-saving services. So there are a few of those emergency response type of activities that are occurring.
Are there any firefighting operations that fly out of there?
Yes. Both, I think both helicopter companies at the airport support firefighting operations.
Do any of those operations require a longer runway?
The helicopter ones don't.
Okay, and then, last one is looking at stakeholders and different types of stakeholders. I can go back to the kind of preliminary list we have. It was kind of a long one, and I went through it quickly, but, you know, other than that list, or maybe within that list, someone that might go unnoticed, we want to make sure, you know, we're talking to who we need to talk to.
Chris, one thing, you had, yeah, airport operators. What did you mean by airport operators?
Pretty, it was meant to be pretty all encompassing for users of the airport as a facility and.
Business owners, pilots.
Yeah, that are based at the airport or using it directly, I guess.
So maybe airport users would be a better way to, because to me, that encompasses both the businesses and the individuals.
Yes, it's meant to encompass both of those.
Okay.
And then the second part of that question was about outreach to, so we may not hear from or even outreach to some of these groups. If you have any suggestions on approaches or tactics or ways to get people engaged. Definitely a topic that on one hand has been in the news a lot, but it's also pretty specialized in a way.
Seems to me pretty comprehensive, this.
Yeah. Yeah, for me, other than maybe changing the top bullet to a more inclusive East Wilsonville resident impact.
Yeah, kind of basing it on the flight path as well as, like, right here, we have just proximity, but looking at the flight path as well.
Yeah, I mean, because I know I'm, you know, I'll say, central east side of the city, and I get the traffic. I'm a pilot, so it doesn't bother me, but it's there and it's noticeable. I mean, I know it when I'm outside, you know, on the patio. So it's definitely more of an impact than just South Wilsonville and Charbonneau.
Absolutely.
Well, we live under the flight path for, between, plenty of helicopter in the airport, and it doesn't bother us that much, and we appreciate. and it doesn't bother us that much, and we appreciate Columbia Helicopter as a, as an important citizen of Wilsonville.
All right, well, oh, go ahead.
I'm going to say thank you guys very much.
Yeah.
Good input.
Yeah, and if you have any other questions that weren't related to the three we just posed, I can definitely, I'll take those questions, or we can, we'll be, we'll be back to talk to you as well, so.
Yeah, you might not want to open up that Pandora's box.
Be careful what you wait for.
Well, thank you so much for all the feedback and, yeah, hanging in there without a break, powering through, so.
Yeah.
Thank you. Very well. Your packet included city council action minutes from their October 4th and 18th meetings. Are there any questions from staff on any of the items there? If not, then the last item in the packet is the 2021 Planning Commission Work Program, one more meeting left in December, and we're going to go back to Town Center Infrastructure Funding Strategy and Frog Pond, Frog Pond Eastern South Master Plan for our work sessions again. Is that current, Ms. Bates?
That is current. Thank you very much, Chair and Commissioners, and I believe, though, you've already had something added to your January agenda, so have no fear, you will have work to do in 2022 as well.
Bring it on, bring it on. I also, I wanted to, before I forget, let the commission know that on behalf of the commission, a live flower plant was delivered to Tammy Bergeron as a thank you for her.
Nice.
And just wanted you to know. Ms. Bates, do you have any announcements or any last words for us?
Yeah, if I may, I know it's been a long evening, we've had a lot on the agenda, this won't take but a minute, but I know that the last time we spoke about Frog Pond, master planning, one of the things we were talking about was outreach, and one of the topics that came up was connecting with the city's new DEI committee. So I wanted to just let this group know that Georgia McAllister and I attended the DEI committee's meeting last evening, to speak with them about, giving a little bit of a primer about what planning is and projects we work on and how it's related to daily life, and then really highlighting some of the outreach work that we have done in the past, particularly recently. What has generated, I would say, more diverse participation in our projects versus where we've struggled to get diverse representation from the community participating, what's worked well, what hasn't. A lot of the things we were able to do in Town Center are a challenge right now with COVID. So we just spoke with that group a little bit about what the project's going to entail, and then posed to them questions specifically about, you know, their ideas for how and where to engage, to hopefully receive more input and interaction with traditionally underrepresented groups of folks in our community, and then asking them also, what should some of our prompts be? You know, we often try to ask some of these questions around our projects about housing and transportation and access and livability, and wanting to make sure we're asking the right questions, and not just kind of sticking to the things that we often stick to in planning. So it was a really great conversation, what a wonderful group to have the opportunity to interact with. We've already been asked to come back, so I guess that's a good thing, and we'll be following up and continuing that conversation with them. So I know that was of interest to this group, so I just wanted to share that with all of you.
Thank you very much. Any follow-up questions from Miranda? Any other words from the commission?
I just realized, looking at the work program schedule, I will be out on December 8th, so just to let you guys know in advance, I won't be able to make that meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Waller.
We will miss you. I'm sure you'll be able to catch up next year. Very good. Do we have a motion for adjournment? As much as I hate to bring it up.
Motion by Jennifer and, and seconded by Olive, we are adjourned at 9:03.
Thank, thank you all, see you all later.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you. Good night.
Miranda, do I?